Meeting called order. Today is Tuesday, October 7th. It's now 6:08 PM. Town Council meeting in the town council chambers. 1170 Main Street, West Warwick Island. Jay, do you some prayer?
We ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion as we work together to create a better way of life for the people of West Warwick and Ireland.
Jay, we listen to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor Dennison?
Here.
Councillor Luchardi?
Here.
Councillor Messier?
Here.
Councillor Vice President Williamson?
Here.
Councillor President Godwin?
Here.
Form is declared. Presentation on the proposed development.
Actually, I'd like to make a motion if we could move Agenda Item K3 to the forefront.
Sir? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Jay?
Good evening. So I don't know if Sarah would like to read the proclamation.
I have that.
You're going to read. This is a proclamation for Mobile Integrated Healthcare Week. Whereas mobile integrated healthcare is a patient-centered healthcare model that delivers services outside a hospital or clinic utilizing mobile resources to serve patients in the community and at home. And whereas the goal of mobile integrated healthcare is to aid in the prevention of overutilization of emergency departments and emergency medical service agencies for non-emergency conditions to improve the quality of life of patients and to improve the healthcare access by addressing social and healthcare needs. And whereas mobile integrated health relies on its established partnerships within the emergency medical services community as well as a multi-disciplinary teams of healthcare providers across the emergency and non-emergency care continuum to help states reduce hospital readmissions and assist patients in properly managing their healthcare issues. And whereas the National Association of Mobile Integrated Healthcare Providers, pre-hospital and hospital-based practitioners, professional organizations in Rhode Island Department of Health who are committed to ensuring the delivery of high-quality mobile integrated healthcare are celebrating October 6th through the 12th, 2025, as National Mobile Integration Healthcare Week. And as whereas it is proper and timely to bring recognition to the value and accomplishments of the West Warwick Mobile Integrated Health Community Paramedicine Program and a dedicated personnel who work tirelessly to improve the delivery of care. And as whereas the West Warwick Mobile Integrated Health Program has made over 1,325 visits to 190 patients in town and the number of West Warwick residents receiving in-home care from mobile integrated healthcare is growing. Now therefore, the West Warwick Town Council does hereby proclaim October 6th to October 12th, 2025, as National Mobile Integration Healthcare Week in the town of West Warwick and encourages all residents to join and recognize in the West Warwick Mobile Integrated Healthcare Team for the important role they play in maintaining in well-being of our community. I had to say that one more time. Well, thank you very much. Um, you know, this team of individuals is actually 20 individuals who are part of the team. It's led by Lieutenant Ryan Sipko. Um, he has helped engineered the whole state plan for community paramedicine. And, uh, you know, our community, you know, is first and foremost in everybody's mind. Um, this is bringing medical care from the emergency room into homes. They are going into homes. They are conferencing with physicians and primary care physicians and administering direct, um, medical interventions from the doctors in people's homes. So it's really something in the future where one of the few communities in the state, Lieutenant Sipko is leading the state, writing protocols for, um, that is being adopted statewide. So really, the recognition is appreciated and well, well deserved. So.
There is no doubt that they are a leader in the state. Um, people talk about West Warwick and Ryan, your leadership clearly has risen to the top. So officially, I will move the proclamation and that we accept it enthusiastically and recognize our guys as being leaders in the state.
I'll second that.
Will you second any discussion? Thank you and congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation on the proposed development at 110 Main Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sam Ben J. Reddick. I'm an attorney. I represent Amanda Coraleso, who is here this evening, who is the proposed developer of this project. Um, first of all, I would thank you for giving us the opportunity to kind of discuss things with you today. I met with many of you. I had meetings with the development agency, with the attorney, with the planner, with the town manager. We've all tried to work to see if we can make this happen. So I thought I'd share with you some of the ideas we have. It's the parking issue, which obviously is the, is the main issue that we've been discussing. And I have a plan here. Um, and let's talk about, before we even look into this, one of the issues is the parking. And I know Tim has been working hard to try to get what this is and, you know, opposition is. And from the apps that we've seen, the information that we have, there actually is a street called Legion Way, which is right behind the post office. It's now used as part of the parking lot. We're hoping that we can use that as sort of a permitting parking area and I'll get into some of the permitting parking areas. Um, and I know we don't have a final answer. And I know Tim is working towards that final answer, but we certainly hope this project move along if we could use some of those parking places. If you take a look at this, um, this is Weaver Street. And we suggested, um, that we... Let's talk to everybody to see.
You can just address it here, but I want to just...
You all have copies.
The council has five copies of the five plans.
So would you mind if we kind of let...
If you want to spin us every... We have copies.
So one of the ideas that was brought to us was to have parking along Weaver Street. Actually, a portion of those spaces on this plan is crocheting onto the road. This is why we certainly need the council to buy into this. We also looked at a couple of other things. Playing with the idea, uh, and this is all for discussion, taking these parking places and moving them in the property a little bit where we think we can get most of those spaces inside the parking lot. And then look across the street and see if we could have some parking on the other side of the street. Not a lot, maybe guess it's a little five.
Five or so.
But, no, well, five more spaces. We also looked at McElroy. And I've driven around a lot and I never see any cars on that. And I kind of look at it dying, God, our problem solved. There's always open space there after 5 o'clock. Unfortunately, it's not ours. Um, but we've looked at that and we tried to figure out if we could use that again as permitted parking. I thought we were going to be able to do annual parking, but our engineers advised us we probably can't do that. So we've got, you have a plan to choose. Let me space it out a little bit.
Um, would you prefer that I refer to here as you're looking or do you want me to turn it for a moment so I can...
You're fine, because the one I keep working on is the one with 25 spaces on one side.
Right, so I'll just for just a moment.
Turn.
For a second. So right here, so right here, these spaces right here, they're on the sidewalk, it's on the street, but we received it fairly wide. So when we did this and we saw it was a one-way direction, it fit these parking spaces in that amount, right? It's this number here. So 1 through 8 is on property. And then the 9 through 25 can be on this fairly comfortably off scale. And then it leaves the street, which is particularly wide, plenty wide enough for passing through on a one-way. So if you guys can all see that. And then we're talking about this kind of posed road where we're not sure where it is.
And one way, this one way goes up.
And so...
This show map.
Well, McElroy comes down this way, right? So it goes one way. And then it goes, you know, kind of off to the side here or it goes, you can say the right onto McElroy. I think it's both directions come correct. So on here, parallel parking, we did, the engineering looked at it. And there's parallel parking where it looks it could be about nine or 10 spaces on here. And then the width of, of this allows it for one side, the whole length of the street. So that would be something we were considering a public park, which is what you're referring to, yes.
Yeah, so I've got, I've got a plan.
It's hard to see it in this one.
It's very difficult. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, it is nine spaces across the street. I know that plan is part of the package.
We have that ready.
You have the one that's parallel, okay.
So those all be permanent cars? Just including the ones on Weaver?
So these, I don't know if these, I haven't seen them.
Those are on... Those are your property.
Right, right.
But the ones on, the ones on McElroy.
Correct, yeah.
Who would, who would be responsible to monitor, for like enforcing that? Would that be on you guys to enforce that?
What are you saying, enforcement?
Somebody else, like somebody just ran into parts of all the parking spots.
Well, I think, I don't, I think it would be on authority here.
Well, I mean, the way that...
I don't know, I mean, I mean, I mean, the property, obviously, that on your property.
I mean, the problem is, the problem with that is, is that we're not an enforcement agency. We don't have any authority over the streets. And that's something we have to work with our tenants and our leases and...
Also, if I may, if the town is going to own it, the town has liability as it relates to those parking spots. So if you're looking for a clean cut.
That's why, that's why.
That's very difficult too, because now it's almost like, again, you just can't offer it up to them. You'd have to offer it up to everyone to bid on it. So, I mean, it's possible there, some of their projected plans, but right now, I don't know if that's...
Yeah, and I know that this is just a proposal.
But there are, there are many issues as it pertains to doing something.
Yeah. So let me just clarify a few things before you move on. The planning board has looked at this. Marilyn has kind, not all of this, but Marilyn kind of sent us an email a few weeks back saying this has to go back to the council to look at this and possibly give approval to or gives suggestions to the planning board, which that normally doesn't happen on a normal basis, right? But because this is parking on town roofs and stuff like that or changing the type of parking or how, car roll parking or whatever, that's what have to come with that. It's all still one way. Um, you know, the, there's a couple of, like when I was going through these plans over the weekend, I, I looked at, there's a few of them I do like better than others, but the, the one thing that, only concern I have is, and it's only during the winter, it's a snowstorm. So for instance, if you are on, because McElroy, McCulproy, whatever it is, that McElroy doesn't have no parking on it now. So I think it's authorized to park there. You know, it doesn't say no overnight parking, doesn't say anything like that. So this, it put a snowstorm, right, where it was caused up. That's the only thing that I thought about this weekend was, okay, at this point, where do, where do they go from here? Um, personally, I, I like how you have the parking spots on the side going into your property and pulling out onto Weaver Street. Um, most of it's your property. It's just going to be a couple of, probably the sidewalk, five feet.
Right, would that mean, yes.
So we have to look at that, you know? Um, there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street. If you left that there, I know you have parking 26 to 33 there on one plan, but on another plan, you don't have anything over there. So that's what basically what they have given us ideas of what they move forward. And we need to discuss as a council, if, if we want to change anything and also send it back to Marilyn and went earth and now get back to the planning board with us and see what goes from there.
So how many total spots are you looking for? Or do you need the entire project?
There's no real number.
Okay.
Um, we're trying to get to 43, which is the number of units that we put. It's one of the best, again, that's why we're kind of picking here, picking there. There's going to be, it's 43 units. Uh, there's one bedroom, is it?
Single units. Single, one bedroom.
One bedrooms and studio.
And so if, if there's, right, so 43 units, 43 states, one bed. What happens if you have just say husband, wife, each of them are? What happens there?
Let me answer a couple of different ways. So in Rhode Island now, if we have two areas of the law that now state that you only need one parking space per two bedrooms, it says adaptive reuse. If I call this adaptive reuse plus. So we had a building like this building and we just put all apartments in there. Then we'd only need one per two bedrooms. And we have low moderate income, another law. Just to give you an idea what's going on, how this is, what direction the state's going in. So a low moderate income, same thing. You have low moderate income, required, have not more than one space per two bedrooms. So our thinking is that this is kind of fit into that. It's a, it's a city, it's on a bus line. There's a lot of things, not everybody's going to be here all the time.
But you, so it's, right, just making sure I'm clear. So it's, it's, they're all still one-bedroom units you're proposing?
One bedroom and studio.
Okay, how many stu-, like studio, would a studio be two bedrooms or?
No, there's not too good.
So one, one bedroom?
No, no, stu-, no.
Studio with one, with the room, bedroom.
Yeah, studio is just one bedroom.
I'm talking, I'm just thinking, how many people?
You're thinking about occupancy.
I am, I'm thinking, how many people would be occupying one apartment? And I don't want to go against the law at all, but I'm also looking at it.
You're not going against the law.
But I'm looking at like... Like the reality is, if I bought one of those with my wife, we each have a car, and there was only one space for, for us to park, I wish she would get a space. I would, I would, but then we would not park.
Well, I mean, I think that...
So that's kind of like...
Those are, obviously they're...
And we have to think about that because we'd be getting calls from the police chief all the time.
Well, all the, all the cities, and you know, this is not a big city, but if you go into a province now, there are apartment buildings being built, that their average is a half a space per apartment. So this is the way, the direction that it's going. People are using more public transportation. Um, there's a sign on the bus line. Look, we don't know, but I think part of the marketing of these is a question that a tenant's going to ask. How many parking places I got? He said, we're going to give you one. Okay, well, maybe this isn't the place for me. So I think those things kind of work themselves out.
Okay.
But I'm not an expert in that, you know? I'm just trying, I do, I want to get what's going on. I want to get the discussion and see. And, and let me go into this area here. So this on the maps shows that it's Legion Way. So we're thinking, well, if it's a public road, we could do the same thing. So let's be practical. And, and Tim brought up the point, um, is that not too many other people are going to park overnight in Legion Way. It's a practical map. So we're kind of speaking that...
Stan, if I may?
That's not...
Don't refer to that as Legion Way.
Not as we know it.
That's the old Legion Way.
The old Legion.
That's the parking, I think that's the parking lot, is it not? It's a parking lot right there.
If you look at the old census maps, um, in the surveys that we have in Rhode Island, just leave people, it's the highway. It's an old street not being used, um, with a, where you can see those electrical pole lines.
If I, if I may, the old McElroy was prior to 19, I believe, 55 from what Al told me, because he was, said he was in high school, because you can tell by the telephone poles.
That was... That was required by the government.
Right, that was the old, that was the old Legion Way. The new Legion Way that is current present now was put together, obviously, with a state project. The old Legion Way, which we named McElroy. So you've got Weaver, McElroy, and Bank Street. But all that property was, we, we, this is what we're trying to research right now. DOT is not being very helpful, is whether or not that property was ever legally transferred to the town of West Warwick. Now, if it belongs to the town of West Warwick, then we have certain issues because of liability, their use of it. Is the town going to sell it, that type of thing? So right now, that's the, the problem with some of the designs is until DOT confirms that it's our property or it's theirs, we don't know what we can do with it.
When you say parking lot, you're talking right out here where we're parking now.
Yes.
Where the hell on the wall, garbage can and...
From your, from your perspective, go to the right. And if you're heading towards Weaver, there's that parking lot, see a pie shape that you're trying to, they want to...
And, and do we utilize that now?
Yes.
Okay, and how many technical spaces are in that park?
I couldn't tell you, but during, I would assume during the day when the town hall is open, that's when it's mostly going to be occupied.
Okay.
And once town hall closes, I'm assuming that besides fire and police.
Town hall's open right now, there's six there.
All right, so...
Oh, for, all right, so it's for parking purposes and, so they don't go anywhere.
All right, so...
Well, you, the town of West Warwick is absolutely using that park.
All right, so my, my question with that is, is, and this all relates, is we just lost parking in a, in a lot across the street that we, it's not ours, but we, we were parking there. So, so, oh, is it? All right, well.
That is fine.
So, so, so we have the...
It's her's eventually.
This is verified, it's her fault.
Oh, all right, so...
Let's make a deal.
No, no, I, I, I wasn't...
We're not talking about that.
So, so anyway, so, so now we've lost the parking in the front. So my, like my concern right away when that happened, when the gates went up, was, all right, where do we park? So the parking would be out here. And such as council meetings that are here, it's a play board or zoning board or, or, uh, any other board meetings.
The administrative function that the town has parking will be in the back now.
Right.
Right, so we would lose that parking?
I don't think we would.
And so, so where, so where would we park that?
Well, that's the question that you're going to be posed with, because if you get, let's theoretically, if that was the towns to give or the town to sell to the developer, that's now going, can't use it. Now, if Weaver Street is also going to be incorporated into their parking plans, pick up the number of spaces that you're now taking away from everybody else. So people are now that work here or that accompany have to park further away and try to find a spot. If there's no municipal parking, they're going to have to park on a town, a street, but who knows where that would be?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I have been down Weaver Street probably 100 times in the past two months. I've never seen it got parked on the side of the street.
Yeah, that's...
So, because since the post office is closed, nobody parks there. Um, across the street from the post office, Weaver, there's no parking sign. And everybody who works at the center of the bank and all that, they have those three parking. So there's nobody parking on that road.
There's also going to be traffic studies presented to the town regarding what impact, if any, from across the street and from this project. So it's not as if you're not going to have any information about whether it's too congested, it's not too congested. You're also going to have information from the DOT regarding Main Street, because that belongs to them. They may say there's not a problem or they might say there is. But right now, it's too, you know, premature to go and jump into whether or not there's going to be any issues. But the issues that you're talking about, specifically occupancy, because you might have five people that don't have a car. You might have 15 people in three bedrooms that have three cars. So there's, it's, it's kind of a matrix that you've got to try to figure out what's what. But again, as far as what can be done now, again, this is just a, a, their first meeting. They give you an idea of what they want to do and then legally see whether or not it can be done.
So I don't know if you've seen this, this might be interesting. So is this part of the package? That we found this doing some research. It's an old map and it shows allegedly what is the state of Rhode Island and it shows old Legion Way on it.
That, this is before our town halls even built.
Why don't I just, I think I have a few of these just that...
Because remember, the town, the town hall used to be on Place Street.
Yes.
But so prior to this, prior to this memorial being built and the police department and the fire department, I mean, the, the construction of the odd highways and byways was a little bit different.
Hold your, hold your hands, Sam.
Those are a little older.
My hand's old, not that old.
You know, the existing Legion Way is not on that print.
Yeah, this goes away, but I think this was Bob Boyer, I think, had found this. It's probably his hands.
In the first question we asked, the first question we asked. We, we, we asked the DOT and DOT wasn't any help saying that when that property that was taken by the state to put the new Legion Way in, what happened to the rest of the property, which I believe would be heading kind of up to west, towards St. Feig, right? So everything from here moving forward to Main Street. Now remember, when the bank, we did their building, probably what, 20, maybe 30 years ago, there was no issues at all as far as DOT. DOT wasn't involved and the state wasn't involved, to my knowledge. It was just over town.
The whole traffic pattern is very strange.
It's, yeah, it's been strange, it's been, it's been stranger over the years, depending on the year.
Unfortunately. So obviously, I want to touch base on this. This is in the existing parking lot that we were looking for some spaces over there. And that's going to be a matter of how many there are. And I understand, everything you brought up, I understand all the issues, but just to show you what we were looking at. And I went out there to see, I think there was a lot of cars there. There was also a lot of open space. And the only other alternative is, um, across the street. So, um, the father, I'm in, um, has told us he's working on something. It looks like we can get, it's within 200 feet of the property line, which allows us to use it. It looks like around seven, um, spaces. Again, there may be more. I think that they have 20 few, maybe more than they need, but we don't really know that. But we know over above what was the stated amount, there should be another set. So I'm trying to take a look at here and there and see if we can get everybody to come together and what?
Is that 43 plus, plus seven or seven included?
No, that's, that's to get to our 43.
Okay.
And then where are you saying that is?
Across the street.
That way.
Um, in the, uh, the old, uh...
Well, right here.
What, what?
There was a right edge, there was an old Walgreens, an old right edge, an old Legion Way.
Yeah.
And it was the old police park. And old Walmart. So with the one I have in front, this one here I have in front of me, you have parking on both sides and I don't...
Well, let, let's talk about that. Okay, let's talk about that. So one of the things that we're trying to do is, um, we also have to work with Rhode Island Historical Preservation Commission. I don't know if everybody knows about the restriction on the property and the covenant. Okay, so, um, this property was originally, not originally, it was deemed from the United States, um, to an individual with a restricted covenant that anything he did there had to get permission from Rhode Island Historic Commission, who we... And there was a little bit of a heat cup, that got pretty general gun involved in it. I got involved in it. We, I talked to Attorney General. We've met with Rhode Island Historic Preservation. Um, they kind of like what we did so far. Um, that's another step, another one of the challenges I spoke about, but I think we'll be okay with them. And part of the sighting of this is for us to try to keep the area next to the fire station free, because it looks good. So yes, we could put parking places specifically in there. We'd rather not. I think the sighting of the building would be a lot nicer not to do that. Um, again, that's an option. We don't really want to go in that direction. Um, I think that, um, the preservation would also want to see a nice sighting of the building. Um, and I think that could take away from it, but again, it's one of the options that we have. We don't have a lot more of what we could do.
Marilyn, do you have any thoughts on it?
I have lots of thoughts.
Well, being our planner, you know, we would like to hear from you on some of this.
As far as the, well, the parking is such a problem. Across the street is going to be 51 units. As, as of the last count for parking, there are 70 parking spaces over there. So there are several parking spaces available.
51 one-bedroom units or?
No, there's a...
No, it's a mix of one-bedroom and efficiencies.
Okay.
Studio apartments.
Okay.
So they probably could really come almost totally close if they used those parking spaces across the street. Um, but Um, so, they probably could really come almost totally close if they used those parking spaces across the street, um, but. I talked about Assleam this morning, at one point, um, during the town's history, there was an area, and I don't remember, we were trying to remember this morning, if it was out in Phoenix by the hotel, that they wanted to propose parking across the street, and it was within one hundred feet. But the DOT came in and said, you can't do that, um, because you're on a state road, we won't allow you to do that, how, if that's the truth, we don't, I don't know, I haven't been here long enough to know that.
So that's, that's the old Hudson cleaners.
Okay.
So that's actually in litigation, still sitting in litigation right now, um, so yes, they, they purchased that, right now it's two-unit, um, on, usually a laundromat, dry cleaner on the other side. Um, they purchased the building at tax sale, and they wanted to put eight units in there.
Right.
And they purchased a, a parking lot behind Coventry Credit, so, which is different, the other issue is, they wanted also handicap park, they had no handicap parking, and that's one of the questions I was gonna ask, is how many handicaps parking in here? But they didn't have handicap parking, they didn't have any of that, so, and they didn't have second knee presses, they didn't have nothing to, so there's, there's a lot, a different history here, you've got a two-unit building, that there's only room to go up, and they wanted to make actually eight units on the first floor. Well, like, single-bedroom housing, it's not even, they want to make it almost like the Phoenix Hotels. They, multiple people use the bathroom, so on, so forth, so there's a lot of things that in court, that, that's still going on, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't even compare it to that, now, being across the street, I, I know with the fire department there and all that, that I can't park on the street, because there is no parking outside the fire department, across the street, right? Because of getting trucks in and out of there, and so on, so forth, but, by looking at this first plan, I know you said you don't wanna park on the left side of the building, looking at the front, there's, on the right side of Weaver, there's eight spots. So realistically, if we can go something towards this plan, that, and I don't know, I'm just throwing out there that those eight spots from Weaver, seven of them go across the street, or really only one spot away, you know, but, that's, that's the first plan, now, the other plans, I, you know, I know you still have to get to the bottom of Legion Way, who Legion Way, and who, who owns it, who's gonna own it? So on, if the town owns it, um, the only thing I do caution is, I, I prefer if we do, if we, if we sell something or whatever, that's, that's probably the only way, because if we start supplying parking for private, um, parties in town parking lots, and it's permitted. Then every developer that comes down Main Street, is still probably gonna require, ask the same exact thing from us, I just wanna be careful, we don't open up that can of worms, I, you know, but, this is a building that's been vacant for almost twenty years, eighteen years, I mean. We have to come up with a solution, and whatever that solution may be, I mean, I, I, I think that we need to get with Marilyn, the planning board, and us, and, and the parties involved, so I'm not gonna heads around, now, I don't know how much longer you're gonna wait for the DOT to get any more information.
One of the things we could do, obviously, is seek a declaratory judgment in court by saying, listen, if they're not gonna put up any information, we can go to court and say, declare this is either our property or it's theirs. Because I don't think they've got the information that we have going back, because with Bob being the surveyor for so many years, but again, it would be nice to see something, cause in our title search, we can't find anything where it was actually conveyed to the town, so if it is state property, and we have to go back and take a look at everything that happened since nineteen, say, fifty-five, especially when the bank re-did everything, probably mid-eighties, when they did that, because when they brought everything out, uh, to Main Street, when they redid everything. But there was, that was all through the, um, the town of Westworth.
And I, it's personally on this first page, fourteen to twenty-five, and thirty-four, forty-two, I don't have a problem with, and I know one to thirteen, you may have a problem with, with, that's on the left side of the building. And.
What about even on that left side of the building, is there a way to kinda be in the middle, and like, add a couple of spots, but still leaves you greater, I mean, even to give you a, a few more spaces, that way you kinda?
Back, back here?
Yeah, the spot in between, yeah, the both, between the both of them.
Well, it's access, it's all the access, you're gonna have to go to DOT to get a curb cut. And it's, there's no curb cut, they're gonna allow, you know.
Well, yes and no, what if they come around the backside of the building, onto?
Well, that's what we were, we got, we got.
I know you're.
Well, yeah, that's, that's.
And that's.
If you, if you look at it. No, 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 so where your parking lot is right now, up on the tops, in the back of the post office?
Here, 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 here.
Nope.
No.
When the green, when the green is, right, nope, not, not the wall, where you're parking, the top of the wall, right here, right corner, bottom right corner.
The actual path, yeah.
The green area.
Yeah, yeah. Not a good man to like a path, like.
Right here, so if you're looking at it, it's on this corner.
It's hard to, it's hard to.
So it's right here, so if you're looking at it, here's the greenery, so, come all the way to the right, go into the bottom, and now go right into that parking lot, that upper parking lot, is there a way to get this parking lot to come out to this parking lot?
Yep, greenery. Yep.
Go to the bottom?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
We know where the curb cut is already here on Weaver Street.
Are you saying, so?
When you get him on the building?
That's the question, is there a way?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yes, so, yes, what is it?
We have the use, we have the use of this road.
Yeah.
Well, yes, you're saying yes, well, what, what's?
Well, well, the use of the road, you know.
I've had a conversation with, with your father, and also with Fire Chief this morning, and it was recommended that the proposed addition be flipped this way, and then that way it will give them parking spaces behind the building, and also be able to wrap it around, um, I correct you?
So, so that actually makes more sense, but I was gonna say, and I, I'm sure the forty-three is the number you need to get to, to make it worthwhile, um, cause my suggestion would be you make that addition smaller, and you won't have an issue, but flipping it might be.
Nothing I haven't said.
Yes.
We, we understand that, just that.
The cost of doing this would make it very not worthwhile.
The rehab of this is.
Yeah, sure, historic part, I'm sure, yeah.
So what, what if you, if, we, everybody puts their heads together, and you just can't get that forty-three number, what would happen, say you only get forty, what, what would happen to that?
I mean, we'll, we'll look at it, to see if it'll work the numbers, to be honest, if it works with the numbers we have, that's why that forty-three, it's an odd number, that, that was a number that we were like, we think we can do it, it works on property, numbers make sense, it's worth doing, yeah. And then the building is, you know, at a point where it's gonna be another twenty years, so we're, we're hopeful that it, that we can find a way.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like the spots are not that, we're finding that even in this conversation, I think, you know, they'll, they're kind of five-year, five-year, doesn't sound like a lot, they do add up, and that's what's been happening, as you see all the various versions of parking.
Right.
But we got to this point where this one seemed the most logical, the answer that we seem to keep coming up with is, what is this road? Uh, uh, the opportunity of access, of the, the other means of parking would have to be if this road was real, so, some of the other, you know, possibilities of moving buildings, and moving them in different directions and all that, if you were to let, say, rotate this, it's just what I thought somebody had said, well, maybe a rotation and a bring back might open up something on the side, but we still have access.
That's right.
And the access becomes a problem again, because what's going on with this road.
And, and again, and, yeah, I know you keep referring to it as a road, and, and, yeah, it's not, but, but, it is used, it is used as parking now, and, if.
Well, it's just for sake of our, you know, that's, yeah.
The parking spot.
Right.
I'm sure you don't listen to all our meetings, but every meeting there's an issue about parking in Arctic, and I think the town manager is gonna get a group together to talk about parking in Arctic in general, but clearly with, across the street and here, um, it comes to the forefront, no doubt about that, yes, yeah.
It's time for a second Old Legion Way.
Another Old Legion Way, Old, Old Legion Way.
No, get rid of, removing this Legion Way, that'd take a longer discussion, but.
This whole confusing area?
No, the, like, the road, the car road, I mean, at this point, I guess, it's not on the agenda, so I don't wanna go too far, but, just something to think about.
Said it more than.
Not just for this project, but the town of Westworth in general.
So Marilyn, where, where does this stand before planning?
It's not with planning, it's with Arctic Redevelopment Agency, and we've had two pre-application meetings, just to go through this, so nothing's really been decided, and at the last meeting we had, is when Commonwealth presented several parking scenarios for us to go over, and then. You know, with talking to everyone that involved the town road, so I figured it needed to go to you guys to make that decision, that's all of my pay grade.
Yeah, the, the redevelopment, they, they want this to happen, but then I just, you're kind of a little bit loosey about the parking, it's really a big decision in the end, but kinda just trying to do it, so, everybody's happy, and it works.
Do we know how, this, this is a crazy thought, but do we know how tall the wall is back here, from the lower level?
It's on one side, you're wrong, you're on the.
Just because I'm thinking, you could do like a one-level straight out from the upper level, and that's parking for this project, underneath would be still town park.
Boy, I haven't said that.
I've said all this stuff.
Understanding that's, that's a, that's not, that's not.
The builder of the product, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody had an opportunity to go in there and see what was done, so, all right.
Yeah.
All right.
Just shares.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Things were taken out, yes, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I think we're all, would love to have the post office, and we'll always call it the post office, um, yes, um, brought back to life, parking is a real issue, I'm not sure we can give you an answer tonight, I, we appreciate that you are, are here to talk to us, and to open conversation, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and again, I know I, I've had some conversations with some council members, you know, saying, you know, we met, and they're looking at doing something with the post office, and I know other members of the Arctic redevelopment have had conversations, so this is a good thing that, at least there is the same room they can discuss it, you know, it's not like. On a legal standpoint, we can't sit here and discuss it outside of here anyway, so, as a group, so.
Oh, that's why we wanted to do this, Marilyn and I kind of agreed together, this getting, right, she's been great, fantastic, answered a million question, gave me to get it sort of it done.
Cause you, you own, and I don't wanna talk about that project itself, but because you're on both, it's almost like there's a squeeze, um, with town hall, with us.
Well, well, there's two owners, it's two owners, she, she.
I'm not the owner of that one.
Post office or dad, I'm just saying.
I realize it's my mom, but.
Alright, I, I.
Yeah.
Just to.
I don't, all I know is the gates are up on it, that's it, alright, so.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're actually a PNS with the post office right now?
Yes.
Based upon pop, and other.
We have a PNS and.
Yeah, let me guess, I mean, it'd, it'd be nice to, that, that's what we're trying to figure out right now, I guess, I mean, for it to, and, and, and just to be frank about it, for it to, you know, for us to have to step away, because we can't find a few spaces and watch that, the whole building up, we, it could be, is definitely a shame, we all know that, but, um, we're, we're trying to be realistic to what we need as well, and, and also, in, you know, to Marilyn's point. It would be nice and realistic about the amount of parking that's needed over there, cause that could solve a lot of problems, too.
Well, I mean, since you're, you're bringing that up, that's why I'm trying to tie the two in together, even though it's different owners, and that's what I'm talking about, is if possible, on your end, to work out something.
And I don't know how that could, you know. In that sense, in that sense, yes, right.
And that's what I'm talking about, is if possible, on your end, to work out something.
I don't know, that's, is that ours?
And I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, you, you, you guys brought it up as far as parking at both locations.
Yeah, we, I mean, obviously, we have, we have to go to the owner and work out an easy one, right, that's, so, we've talked about that, I just don't, we've talked.
But yeah, now with a parking.
We're not sure exactly what that number is.
How's that work? Right.
I assume you've also talked to Centerville.
And, and we, we don't wanna do anything that's inconsistent with the decisions, decisions that were made there, so, as soon as we understand.
Okay, alright, right.
They say no.
What we have, um, then we can sit down and have a real negotiation, so.
How's it work real?
I said, have you, have you gone to Centerville to see if they have any spaces that could be used?
I don't think so.
You know, that's too easy of a solution, I went, I walked, I, when I got here, I said, I gotta go out early, so I walked around, I go, my God, look at this, all these spaces, thank you.
Well, believe it or not, walking back there at nine-thirty in the morning, look how many spaces are up there, so.
That's where I think they're, I, it's gonna be tough, you know, we were trying not to rely on a what-if, or maybe a company that says, please, no, I don't wanna deal with all that, you know, where they don't leave their cars, or they don't.
Yeah, because.
That's the problem, you know, you could have evening parking after six, but their, their concern is gonna be number one liability, we can probably resolve that with insurance, but number two, if so many parks they caught, they remember the community, they don't wanna start telling us, so, there's issues, there's issues. That's why we're trying to figure out the street, I, when I looked at the street, oh, that's wide, we can do, that was wrong, I thought we could do Angel Park, you get a whole bunch more, but, and, and if I can just let you know, you might wanna take a look at this, but East Greenwich has this, uh, an ordinance, I don't know if Tim's ever looked at it, um, but there you have an ordinance for a couple of areas, um, where you get, uh, a pass, and once you get that pass, it's yours. So, we can do this, we would have you pass it, grab both passes, and, and it kind of runs with the apartment, so, I made it, cause they're the same problem.
Play a parking. Yeah, they're kidding, kidding, pretty sure, yeah, it gets very, it gets very hairy, because now, you get somebody who parked there, and all of a sudden they call them the police department, and.
Well, it's not, it's not reserved space.
Yeah, but it's permitted parking.
Right.
Permanent parking, so, I mean, they've got a real problem, because there's so many apartments out, and everybody's building more apartments, so they have a tremendous.
Right, and, and I get it, cause province has the same issue, the problem, so, they do permit parking, overnight, you're gonna pay for that permits, but, at that point, what happens?
But I think the privilege, I know, East Greenwich, I made it wrong, I think, I think it's a hundred dollars a year, so it needs to be a little bit water covered insurance policy, we can deal with all these things, one way or another.
Right.
Marilyn, um, I think from here.
Yeah, thank you for giving us, for giving us an update, getting us involved, and we wanna stay involved, um, to understand that.
Oh, I mean, we want you to be involved, we wanna, we want this to be successful, so we wanna.
Yes, and we would like it to be also, and so we'll have to.
And I, and I, and I believe, once it goes before the Arctic redevelopment, that once they make an approval, it should come back before us, so we understand what's going on.
Well, one of the suggestions that I taught, is to go in front of them, and get our approval as soon as we get, uh, architectural, and make that decision subject to coming back here for the final parking approval. So, you know, we want, you're gonna have to be empowered for this, but I like to go through that process, get that approval, hopefully by then we'll have something like.
What is your ideal timeframe, adult?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, so that's a no, yeah, yeah, your PNS is.
I, I don't know, we were, we were talking today, about how long, it's gonna, like, obviously, you don't wanna start spending a lot, architects are crazy, so, as soon as we get that feeling of comfort that, yeah, everybody wants to happen, let's make it happen, we gotta get the architect involved, we gotta get setup plans, we gotta work with, um, historic preservation, honestly, it's not the easiest thing, but we'll work it out, so, I don't know, that could be like. Then as soon as that happens, we wanna go over there and get some air, it's, it's costing money.
You're doing a pro bono, right?
I, I mean.
Alright.
No, not waiting on you, I, this is my fun.
Pays them, right, he pays them, right?
Hey, I tried for you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Reddick?
No, we, we, we have, we have parking issues, we know we, we need to address it, and this'll, this'll make us maybe take a, a, a look a little earlier than we were.
We appreciate that, fine.
So, thank you for coming, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
See you again soon.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five town council meeting, and cancellation of taxes, and the amount of three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and three cents that's requested by attack.
Move the consent agenda.
Move in second, any discussion? Aaron, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Ordinance, the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, amending chapter eleven, motor vehicles and traffic, article two, operation, section forty-seven, motor vehicle restricted routes, and appendix C traffic ordinances, no parking foolish road.
Move the ordinance.
Move in second, discussion? Mark, no word?
Um, I feel like we've been talking about this for years, but.
It's been about two months.
It's a long time, older parking situation.
I'll be taking public comment in one second, if I'm just here.
So, I just wanna verify that notice was sent out.
I imagine there's people here for that tonight.
Okay, can anybody confirm that, if you're a resident, you did receive notice?
Al, Al said, said that the major catchum did put it in mailboxes.
Right, right, I, yeah, I saw that, I just wanna make sure.
I posted online, I saw it on social media.
Okay, well, for those of you who are here for the first time and don't know what my stance is, um, I, I oppose this for a lot of different reasons, reasons, the main one being that I don't think we should be taking away the full utilization of somebody's property, they pay taxes in this town, who am I to tell them not to park in front of their house? So, that's where I stand on it, I don't want somebody telling me, I can't have more people than I can fit in my driveway, or they're gonna go have to park in front of my neighbor's house, and inconvenience them, so that's where I stand on it, um, I'm always willing to listen to anybody, I haven't been contacted outside of a meeting about this in, um, in quite some time, so with that, if nobody else up here has anything.
Just have one thing, Sarah, check, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Sarah, can you let house?
Yep.
So, so I was actually, after speaking with the Fire Chief, and, and saying it would be, um, an issue with emergency vehicles getting through, and I voted, I voted yes, um, I'm kind of conflicted, I mean, it's, it's not my area, I don't live in the area, I don't live on the street. So I I really think it's important that people do live on the street, have something to say. Um but I did drive it today with with a truck and a trailer on back of my truck, and I came up Coeset Avenue up to Coolus, and it was, there was nobody on the right hand side. And I came and I went through the plat, came back out, out the outside, back down towards Coeset, and there were two cars parked in front of their homes, I would assume, their homes, but they were parked way up. So when I came, all I thought was, okay, if there's no parking, saying this right, Coeset Avenue, there's no parking on this side, then everybody was gonna, everybody would have to park on this side. So as as you're coming up, going back down toward Coeset, and you have a row of six cars, and I'm coming through, and a car is coming up from Coeset, the question I had is, who's going to back up? I'm not gonna back up with, and at the time with my truck and trailer, you you wouldn't mind me to do that. Um but there's a car coming forward, and you basically, you could meet in the middle, then what happens? So, and I never thought that before, um but I'd really like to hear what the people on the road have to guess.
Da- David?
I love.
Yes, as far as the notice is concerned, on September thirtieth, Major Ketchum placed the notice in each mailbox on Coolus Road between Cedar Drive and Robin Lane, and the notice stated, and I'm I'm reading it, residents of Coolus Road, there is a town council meeting on Tuesday, October seventh, two thousand twenty-five, starting at six P M to discuss adding no parking signs on Coolus Road from Cedar Drive to Robin Lane on the westbound side of Coolus Road. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please feel free to appear at the council meeting and voice your concerns during the public comment. So that notice did go out and was delivered on September thirtieth personally by Major Ketchum.
Thank you, Al. It's a very personal, that's Al, our attorney for standing in his own.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council on this?
No, so it it's no parking on, just clarify that for me, on the westbound side, Al, is that what you said?
Hey.
On the west side, not, well, yeah.
The west side.
Exactly.
It should be the west side.
West side is the wrong.
So if you're coming up, it's the right hand side, if you're coming from Coeset, it's the right hand side, all the way up to Lonsdale.
Yes.
However, I think the, I think the important.
Coolus takes our side.
I think the important point is
This option.
that everyone was given notice.
This option.
All right, thank you, Al. So yeah, it's from, I'm sorry, because you forget, Lonsdale is off to a bad end, so. When you come up to the stop sign and go right, you're still on Coolus.
You're still on.
You're still on Coolus.
So it's from the stop sign from the corner of Coolus and Robin Lane.
Right.
To Coeset Avenue.
No, no, Cedar. The Cedar. The stop sign at the bottom.
Because there's no parking already on the right hand side.
Correct, and that's from the old days.
But that would make no parking from the station, station all the way up to the stop.
Yes.
And that's the widest part of Coolus, by far. The part we're talking about putting, if you take a right onto Coolus, it's far less.
Honestly, I don't know, I don't.
I I didn't say things, so it was a lot of traffic, I didn't say anything today.
I know some people did measure, so.
Yeah.
Um any comments from the council before I go into public comment? Public comment, just come up, state your name and address for the record, and please be respectful as you come to the microphone, thank you.
Good evening, Steve Knopf, fifty-four Coolus Road, I've been at that residence for twenty-eight years. Over the years, I've seen many things on Coolus Road, car in my backyard, car in the bushes, straight up Coolus Road at the end, which is where it goes to uh Robin Lee and continues on, goes to Lonsdale, power across the street, hit a, hit the, hit the house straight ahead. Um in the bushes, right on the uh right on the corner, car in the bushes. One of my neighbors, two houses down, um pulled out of his driveway, got broadsided. Now we have an uh a resident who has a parking, a a a driveway, and they're parking, instead of parking the cars in the driveway, we're parking three cars on the street. And it's not, it, what it is, is especially when you're coming up Coolus Road and you're going down towards Coeset, when you get to that residence, there's a crest in the hill, so now you weave into the center lane and you have someone coming up, there's gonna be a head-on accident there. Not only that, I didn't take a measurement of the road, the road's approximately, these measurements are approximate. The road is approximately twenty-four feet wide. A compact SUV is approximately seven feet wide. So now if you have two cars parked side by side, now you're down to ten feet. Now, no one parks directly against the curb, so now you lose a foot either way, so now you're down to eight feet. I went to Coeset and I measured a small fire truck. Small fire truck is approximately about nine to nine and a half feet wide. So now, an emergency vehicle, which on approximately, every two weeks, we have the fire trucks and an ambulance going up that road, wouldn't be able to get by if they're parked side by side. So it is an issue on Coolus Road. No one stops at the stop signs. I've come backing out of my driveway, I had to put rocks on the corner of my yard, pulling out of my driveway, backing out, no one stops at the stop sign, I don't know how many times we've almost got hit. My rocks, go take a look at them and see how many times I've had to have them move back because people driving up there hit the rocks. So it is a safety concern, parking in the street. I, on my way here tonight, there was three cars in the driveway, three cars parked in the street. The street is not a permanent parking spot. I understand, I've been there for twenty-eight years, I've had parties, been mindful of my neighbors. I I often say, if I have a party, park on one side of the street, pull around the corner. Again, I try to be courteous to my neighbors. It's it's not fair that we're just parking just to park in the in the in the street. Now, as someone with respect, I got the notice in my mailbox, I'm sure that individual got the notice in the mailbox. Now, if I was the one parking on the street and I noticed it was a problem, I probably would have said, well, what can I do to rectify it and try to make the change? Well, over the past week and a half since we've gotten the letter, nothing has changed. So there is a problem there, and again, I've taken the measurements, my measurements are approximate, but there has been, the other day I got dropped off, people were coming up, they were laying on the horn because they couldn't get by because there was a landscaping truck in front of the house with the cars parked there.
This Saturday.
That was last Tuesday that that happened. It was last Tuesday.
Saturday, there was the two car, the car was parked, that car, the black car, and a car was directly across the street from.
I'll be honest with you, the people in the, and it's not just Coolus Road that is concerned, because that is a cut through from Coeset all the way to East Greenwich Ave, and it it applies to all the neighbors, there's seniors that live in that area, and it is a safety concern, if the fire truck comes up there and has to back out, it could be someone, you know, s- someone could need that emergency response and can't get up the street, so.
So Steve, one of the things I want everybody to keep in mind is that if we pass this ordinance as it's written tonight, it does not take those cars off that street. It's the other side. So those cars will still have every right to park there. Now, would it eliminate somebody parking from directly across? Yes, absolutely. But I would just want to be very clear that it does not eliminate that that single small black car we've been talking about for months, and I know it's a couple more here and there, and that's the the real consistent one. That's the one that, you know, probably eighteen out of twenty-four hours a day is sitting in that spot, I know. But I just want everybody to understand, this does not eliminate those people from parking in that spot.
And to me, it's it's it's, again, I don't understand why, is it the inconvenience of maybe having to go out and move a car? I put in a second driveway to get my car off the street.
Yeah.
I did what I had to do. You know what I mean?
No, I understand, I understand.
There's nothing we can control, so.
And and you have to be careful there also, because of the corners there, people whip around those corners, and if we put, start parking cars and they start going up towards the top of the hill, like at my house, what's gonna end up happening is people are gonna come whipping around that corner, and there's gonna be another accident right in front of my house.
So I think I, I'm sorry, I think I pointed out some mark last time, after the meeting, was I think people should be more concerned about the model. Matter of time, I've been up there, I know I seen three people walk through that stop sign and went right, just zip right, right, never even stopped, so. I I've, and if that's three when I'm there, I can only imagine how many there in a month's time.
It's 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 constant, I've seen kids on bikes, and I've constantly tell the kids, you don't want, you want to go to the other side because they whip around that corner without stopping. It's, that that street is 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 pretty, you know.
I want to really understand, I I do agree with the concerns about speeding, not stopping at the signs. This ordinance does nothing to address that.
Yeah, no, but the parking is, the parking is an issue as far as, as far as an emergency vehicle. When you have, and and it's, it seems like there's been a lot more parking on that street where it's it's double parking. You really can't double park, and I get it, you have a, you have a party, you know, it's for a few hours, I'm I'm not trying to, it's it's the constant, it's not a parking lot. It's not, it's not a road designed for a parking lot. That's pretty much all I have.
So just a question, because I'm, again, I've only driven up and down, I mean, I don't live there, so, you know, things happen all the time. So if you have the parking on the, so how many cars are parking on the west side?
Just just state your name and address for the record, then we'll take.
My name is Bethany Charlotte, and I live at thirty-five Coolus Road.
And just for my, where is that? Yeah, where is?
So we are on the westbound side, which is the side that we want to actually ban parking on,
Okay.
which is not the side that is actually an issue.
Yes, okay.
Would totally agree in the sense of not being an agreement, which was.
She's on the side of the.
So we're coming up, Coeset Avenue, you're on the right hand side.
I'm on the station fireside.
Yes, okay.
Thirty-five.
Also, is 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 there a way we can have a one, one hour or two hour parking limit, where it's not overnight or permanent parking?
Person is not a park across the street from the actual driveway.
Okay, so that's that white lot, is part on, is on your side.
She wasn't feeling free.
On this.
On the east side, across the street.
So if the parking is on the east side now, and we're looking to to ban parking on the west side, anybody parking on the west side is just gonna go onto the east.
It's it's not just the one side, it's the double parking. What happens is, is you have, you have a lot of times on the weekends, if you have multiple people on that street having parties, and they're parking on both sides, now you're down to a sing, now you're down to a single lane there.
Which, Steve, in all all honesty, that helps the speed.
I think I get.
The other problem is.
It helps, that's, but but it's such a long street and there's so many cars, it forces, again, now you're head on, and then someone's, someone has to, someone has to back up.
And correct me if I'm wrong, coming from Coeset, oh, there's no stop sign at Cedar going up, correct?
No, it's only coming down, but when you're coming down that hill, so when you're, if if it's down to a single lane and you're coming down Coe- down Coolus to Coeset, right in front of, right, right?
I gotta have one conversation. All right, I'm sorry.
Once you, once you hit that crest and someone's coming up the hill, it's a blind spot. It's a blind spot, now you meet in the center because there's parking on two sides of the street.
So when you meet in the center, at that point, you stop.
And someone has, someone has to back up.
And you could be backing the entire length of the street because everybody is.
And if it's a fire truck or an ambulance.
Is it, is there one stop sign, that spot, or there's no?
There's one stop sign at the bottom of the.
And that's not a stop, that's a fire alarm block.
No, there's no, no stop sign, it's at the top of the, top of the hill that there's a stop sign, and at the bottom, it's at the corner of Cedar.
And Cedar.
That's your somewhere again?
So. No, he's talking, where where Steve, where's Steve, where's your name? This is Steve.
This is Cool, this is Coeset, that way.
So this is. No, I don't want to see, I don't want to see people who's.
This is Coolus.
Parking has a, I've just heard of it since, but it's. You're heading this way.
I also want to bring this to light. Further down the agenda here tonight, further down the agenda here tonight, we have consideration for um a permit for somebody having an event on Coolus, on Halloween night. So what, I don't know how many people they're expecting, I don't know, but let's say it's twenty vehicles. Those twenty vehicles are gonna go park on your side of the street if this passes.
And 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 to me, to be honest with you, I think that was the proper way to do it, because they went to the town, they pulled the permit.
No, I I agree.
Now, 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 now the fire department and the police department know that there's an event going on there.
No, I, I agree with that.
They have, they have an act, they have knowledge to go a different way in an, in an emergency situation.
I agree with what you're saying, but what I'm, what I'm trying to bring to light is, if, say there's twenty cars, now those twenty cars, if what we're talking about right now passes, go to the other side of the street, to the neighbors across the street.
Right, which is my side.
Your side and your side. No, not your side, opposite your side. So those are the things that come into play here. Now we're, now we're gonna take twenty or so cars and load them up in front of the the neighbors across the street.
Well, is there, is there a way, is there a way that we can, we could, we can make it where it's an hour or two parking, where it's not a permanent parking? Or or no overnight parking? It shouldn't be an overnight parking in in on a street like that. It it especially, especially when there's spots in the driveway. There's no reason why, would, you can probably fit six or seven cars in that driveway and we're parking in the street.
But so is is this a black and white issue, or can we be creative with signage?
If you want to re-go back in time and make Coolus Road wider, start taking their property, you can do that. Hold on, that's one issue. The other issue is Coolus Road, again, it de-measured it, all right? You could put no parking on both sides.
I agree.
You might agree, but that might be impossible to do because you've already allowed for parking there. Coolus Road's been there, I think, the entire time the town's been there. So I mean, one of the questions is, and again, I don't disrespect your opinion, but, I mean, realistically, how many head-on collisions have there been on Coolus Road in the last five years? How many car accidents, all right?
Car accidents, yes, they're head on.
But but there's been car, but people know how to maneuver, so I don't, just, you know, this will get what you're saying about the turns and the stop signs, that's a different issue, but when you only have a road that's twenty-four feet wide and you've got homes on both sides, you're treating one side of the road differently than the other side of the road. So if you're gonna treat them both the same, you take all the parking spots off the road, make both sides no parking, but then you're gonna have people that have individuals, I'm having a graduation party, a birthday party, wedding celebration, a reunion. They're gonna be uh coming in asking for special parking permits, and then what do you do? Limit them to a certain number? It it's it's almost a known one situation.
There's, there's a lot of roads, especially in my work, there are much more now than this road. I could, I could list a dozen in Arctic that are.
Behind Arctic, it's impossible, and you, and talk about backing up, you have to wait in line, like air traffic control, in order to get your spot, in order to move forward, because they're even narrower than the, than the, your twenty-four feet. So I mean, it's it's a difficult proposition, but I mean, for one car to to create all this havoc seems kind of a, um, you know.
It hasn't been, it, it hasn't been an issue probably the last probably year, year and a half, that it's been an issue on that street.
I know, and the irony is that that car will still not be affected by it, it's at the top of the side of the road, right?
I struggle with that myself.
That car is still gonna remain there.
I mean, we we have streets in West Cork where that, I don't live on Coolus, I live on Wakefield, I came down Grandview today. There's cars parked on both sides, you had to do a little slalom to get through. I I think that's in a lot of places. Clyde Street the same way, I know you've said Phoenix Avenue, uh there are similar issues. I just don't know what kind of Pandora's box we're opening if we start doing this, that's my concern.
I think if you were to pick it, the individual who's parking or truck is.
Just come up to the microphone.
Sorry, I think if law enforcement was enforced for the vehicles that are parking across the street from someone's driveway, making it impossible to back up without hitting them.
So right now, they're not breaking any laws?
They are, because they're, they're, they are parked directly across from the driveway, so it's a meter exit.
That's not in law.
That's not.
It's not in law.
It's inconsiderate, but it's not, it's not a law, yes, yes, yeah.
It's very.
Yeah, that's exactly what what Steve said, inconsiderate, no.
All right, I.
You know, it's it's more of a respect than, you know, it's.
I mean, I, 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 I called, I called the 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 West Cork Police a few times in the last over the summer because of the road situation there, because you wouldn't be able to get an emergency vehicle up there. Few times in the last over the summer because of the road situation there, because you wouldn't be able to get an emergency vehicle up there, so. And there are seniors in that area, I know one, one right in my. Circle right there, that, they're there probably. Every two weeks. To fire department.
So a question, exactly, guys, I don't know, I probably should, I've been with Westmore twenty-six years, but. Um, if you have, you have that situation. And, and I picture exactly what you're saying, where the road just kind of closes right down. And you have a small car that you can get through, you bring your mirrors in so you don't get, you don't hit anybody, you move right through. If it is a big, bigger vehicle. What happens if? What happens, you can't, you can't, so you can't get through.
The fire truck will have to back up.
Right, is that a police call, is that a?
But again, this story, ask the chiefs of both departments. How many times their vehicles could not get through and cause damage to the parked cars? I don't, I, I, again, they're, assuming there are some, but it doesn't happen all the time.
Right, right.
So, again. I mean, I don't wanna sound, I don't wanna sound flippant, but I mean, sometimes if you know that the street's narrow and there's parking on both sides. And you have another way, you have another way to get to Coeset Avenue, you avoid it, right?
But, but the question, if, obviously that's going to happen, it's probably happened many, many times. Are, and I'm, I'm thinking we, you call the police. Police come out, who moves? You have a car here, a car here, they're both in a public street, do they have to move?
If they're blocking. Ingress and egress from, from a, uh, driveway, yes, if they're blocking the road itself because neither one of them move. One of the officers is gonna decide probably ticket them both. For obstruction.
Okay, alright.
You know what I mean, so if they're both gonna play chicken and neither one of them's gonna move, I'm assuming the police officer will ticket them both.
Okay, alright.
Very, but other than that, again, I go back.
So that will be this, that would be a solution?
To ticket both cars?
No, I mean, it'd be solution here. And I'm just thinking of this gentleman, I mean, if this were the case, you'd call the, call the police.
Yeah.
And the police at that point would, if nobody moved, you'd ticket the car.
But how many times does that occur when nobody's moved?
So I, I'm, I'm just saying. The, the police are coming out and they're saying, if the police came to my house and did that with me. You know, I would know, alright, it's a reminder for next time, the next time I park here, I wanna avoid parking and blocking the area.
Again.
Right, I need to get a ticket, but.
Excuse me, I, I, if, if the car is a parked car, and you can park on that side of the street or that side of the street. And someone is moving their vehicle to try to go through, they're not gonna have that parked car ticketed because it's, it's legal to park there.
But what I knew Jay's asking is, a police officer shows up, it's got two cars blocking the road, making the road narrow. Who moves?
He would ask both of them.
But one of, neither one of them want them.
Then he has the ID, he can either cite them for obstruction or bring it to the attention of traffic.
But the point, the point is though, if, if they come out and some, and, and the police speak with them. It, it's, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to be.
I suggest, I mean, since, since I am not a.
As a party is.
So suddenly asked, I mean, I would ask the chief, yes.
But I mean, I would. I, I'll solve it right now, please solve it.
Thank you.
If, if, if a resident calls and they're concerned about a, a piece of apparatus, emergency apparatus not being able to get through a street. We're gonna send a police officer. And they're gonna determine whether or not there's enough room for a, a, a fire apparatus to get through. You may ask the fire department to bring the truck up and to see if they can get through. If, if the street cannot be. Navigated by a big piece of fire apparatus. We're gonna move the car. If, if the owner doesn't wanna move the car. Not a problem. We'll call the tow company, they will drag it up onto the flatbed. Okay, solved. Very simple. And that's probably, they'll probably never do that again, right? Well, I mean, but that's.
But that, that is true, when, when, when emergency vehicles are involved, that's the response, but if it's just regular people, that won't move. Because another person can't get through their, their SUV that's twelve feet wide, or a Hummer that's twelve feet wide. And you've got citizen one, citizen two, and citizen three, what are the police gonna do, who are they gonna make move? Now normally, if somebody comes to your house, as a courtesy to the police department, you're gonna say, yeah, I'll move.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I would say nine times out of ten, that's gonna occur. The tenth time when someone says, I'm not gonna move, and the neighbor across the street says, I'm not gonna move, we're right back to where you were, one of you is gonna get towed.
Okay, did I say?
Or just be fair about it and tow them.
Tow them, right, absolutely.
Right, that's the answer, yeah. And I, and I, and I'm, and I'm not gonna throw the fire chief under the bus, I, I don't mean it that way. Rest, rest assured, rest assured, if there's an emergency, and, and a fire truck can't get through, the fire truck's gonna go through.
They're going through.
They're going through, they're going through, they're going through.
The fire truck's gonna go through.
Right.
They have big steel bumpers that are really shiny, they might not be shiny afterwards, but they, they're gonna get through anyways.
That's what they do.
So that's, so that's the answer.
Wi- without a doubt.
That's the answer.
Chief, the mic.
Yes.
Alright, I'm a little step by foot, so.
Just now with the new fire truck, right? One of the older ones.
So, so.
I just brought it up because it was a safety concern on, on the street. And like I said, living there, the amount of time I lived there, there has been multiple. Situations on that street.
And, and you believe that this ordinance is the one that should be enacted?
I wish we could solve it a different way.
We're open to suggestions.
Again, I don't understand why we can't, we can't have no overnight parking.
But that, that's not gonna help you during the day, right?
It's really not, it's really not, but it, it's not a permanent parking spot. The street is not designed for permanent parking. I get, again, I get having parties, I get it. A function, a graduation, whatever the case may be, but it is not a parking lot.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Just state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Shalan, thirty-five Coolus Road, I've lived there since nineteen seventy-four. There is a problem on that road. There are people who have spaces to park eight cars. They park four cars on the road. One car in the driveway. This is constant. Okay? Coming here tonight. My daughter and I. Almost ran head on because we had to go buy these cars. This is day in, day out. Truthfully, I would like to see no parking on both sides of the road. The road's too narrow. Uh, as far as the fire truck, he's right. If it's blocking, I know what the fire truck is doing, my dad was a fireman. They'll just push the cars aside. But. One of these days, kids come down this road. Gonna get a kid killed. Because we have people who are ignorant. They simply were not. They don't care. So yes, no parking on both sides of the road, yes, if you wanna have a party. We have Thanksgiving, Christmas. I will come to the police department. Can I be allowed? Permitted, that I can park twenty cars in my yard. There may be four cars I have to keep on the road, can I have a permit for this night? You can say yes, you can say no. I'm good with either one, if he says no, that's fine. But. No parking, both sides, not west side, not east side, no parking. Done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mary, not any other comment from the council? I'll take a roll call vote, as ordinance says, written on the west side. Jack?
I'm gonna, I'm. I'm gonna vote no, and, and the reason is, I don't think this is. An, an issue we can solve with this ordinance. Based on what we heard tonight.
Thank you, Jason. I'm gonna vote no, this is. Mark?
I'm gonna vote no, and I'm only gonna say that, um. I, I believe. In what you just said, sir, it's, it's, it's all or nothing, because I don't think it's fair to go either way. So, we're voting on a particular ordinance tonight, and, and on that, I'm gonna vote no.
Mary Beth?
I, I agree, it, it, this does not solve the issue, the people that seem to, um. Not be the best neighbors, uh, are impacted by it, so I, as written, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no.
Ordinance fails.
That doesn't mean that it doesn't, it can't be addressed again in some other fashion, but as written, um, it fails.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dot six. Amending section five point one table of use regulations, non-residential use. Retail business cannabis retail sales in section five point three specially used permit seven cannabis retail sales as amended by ordinance twenty twenty-five. Dash six point one amending section five point one table of use regulations, non-residential use. Uses E retail business, West Cork zoning code as amended.
Wow. Who's the resident, move the ordinance, yes, exactly.
The ordinance. Second, now.
David. By way of background, as, as I've said a couple of times. Yeah, back in two thousand, just to give you the background, back in two thousand twenty-three. When the Cannabis Retail Sales Act was originally passed. I spoke to a couple of other, uh, planning people. Uh, looked at a couple of other ordinances. And because the way the statute was written. It said that the. State would issue the license, but there were restrictions that municipalities were allowed to put on. The licenses, uh, on, on the, the, the issuance. Well, in two thousand twenty-three, the council tabled it and decided wis- wisely, in my opinion. To hold off until the, uh, cannabis commission was appointed. The cannabis commission was recently appointed and they issued regulations. The act did not change leaving the town with these. I'll call them minimum requirements that they could. Stick in their ordinances. I primarily took the two thousand twenty-three ordinance. Uh, made a few changes to comply with the updated. Uh, regulations and presented to you. Since it was originally presented, not only did the council have a number of concerns. With distances, but other town officials all questioned, why were we doing this? When we have the situation where if somebody wants to be a cannabis, uh, grower. They just asked, the state asked the town if it's permitted, the town says yes. And from there on in, and I spoke with Chief Arone, for example, the only thing the fire department does is they go in to make sure it's a safe. Operation, but the state takes care of it. So giving that some thought, and then the comments that I received from, uh, town officials. That I spoke to, they're, they, I seemed to get an attitude of. The officials saying, well, you know, the taxpayer voted and said, we want. Retail cannabis sales so we can get this tax. So why are we putting all these hurdles in the way? And with that thought, I have submitted to you an amendment to the. Original orders, uh, order that I set, uh. Submitted, and the new ordinance just says that. The cannabis retail sales is located in a, is okay to be located in a business or a CI zone. What this new ordinance does is it now says that when the state notifies the town. That someone has applied for a cannabis retail sales license. That then goes to the building official, the building official lo- looks at the location. And if it's in a B or a CI zone, it notifies the cannabis commission. That it is in a zone that in which it's allowed, and that's it. From there on in, the, uh, the state takes over. What it does is, it simplifies our end of it, it removes the expense of a zoning board hearing. Not only the expense of the applicant, but also the expense of the town in going through the application. And the end result is, the state is going to be, take control of it in any event. So I've offered as an alternative to you, an ordinance that says. You set that the areas where cannabis retail sales are allowed. And in discussions with the town planner and the town building official. We decided that should be a B or a CI zone, and that's all this ordinance does. So, if, you know, to sum it up. If, if you pass this ordinance, the town will get a notice that somebody has applied for retail cannabis sales license. It goes to Bob Assloan, if it's in a B or a CI zone, within forty-five days. He tells the cannabis commission, it's in a proper zone, and from there on in, it's the state's problem, not the town's.
So.
Go ahead.
Are you gonna go?
No, I, I, oh, why, thank you, yeah. So, so Al, the only confusion I have, I agree with you, the way I have read it, and, and I have had conversations with Al, I'll, I'll be honest. Is that. You know, the town, people in the town did indeed vote for overwhelmingly to allow retail sales. My understanding and reading of the state. Guidelines is that. It's the CCC that's gonna make the determination as to whether someone's gonna get a license. And. The only thing they really wanna hear from the town is, is it in a, in a designated area or an area we have designated to be okay? I, I'm a little confused about, cause this is a second reading of. Twenty-five dash six as amended. But I think what you're asking us is, and, and I would wanna consider so. Uh, i- is.
What, what I'm proposing.
Twenty-five six point one.
What I'm proposing to you is an amendment to twenty-five point six. When this first came before you for first reading, there were questions asked. So I submitted twenty-five point six as amended, and you had more questions. So now I'm just submitting a new amendment to twenty-five points, twenty-five dash six. And I've just changed the name of it to twenty-five six point one, but it's strictly an amendment to what you've already been working on.
So, so can I, I.
Yeah, for now.
Alright, so my, my question and my concern, like it, like it always has been is. If, I realize that people voted in, that's fine. But, um. I'm not a pot smoker, I'm not against it, well, I mean, I'll just be, plain English, I'm not, I'm not into that. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not against anybody that does. Um, my issue with the smell, me personally, I can't stand it. Uh, and I'm, I'm probably not the only one. If you like it, you like the smell, all the power to it. My concern though is, if you place this in an, in an area. And I can be off base with this, and obviously it can't be near a school or so, so I'm gonna use this as an example. And I haven't talked to anybody, I have, I'm just trying to pick a place that would be a, a common area for people to vote in. Just say this was in the plaza on Coeset Avenue where. Um, Subway is.
Agreed, we put it right there.
Well, no, I mean, that's, it's a common place, that's a place of business. Out. Would that be allowed in an area like that? There's no school around.
If I, if I can respond, I'm gonna read right from the statute. A city or town may adopt ordinances that ban or impose restrictions on the smoking or vaporizing of cannabis in public places. Including outdoor common areas, parks, beaches, athletic recreational facilities, and other public spaces.
But that has nothing to do with the retail sale of it.
Right.
No, so as far as, what your, but yours, but your question.
Uh, my, my, so my, my question. But.
I think I can answer your question.
Okay.
We already have, and, and I'm saying this, I'll admit, out of ignorance. We already have cultivators. My guess is that the smell from a cultivator would be a lot greater. Than the smell from somebody who's just selling it, I don't know, cause I have no idea what it smells like. Uh, but, so I would think that a concern of, of that nature is, is minimal as compared to what the state already allows. Over which we have no say.
And, and it would be a different, it would be a different ordinance, I believe, it would be more in line with public drinking kinda thing, so I, I don't wanna confuse the two.
I'm not, I'm not saying, so I, I guess, I, I'm not involved in that, so I guess if there's a, a place that sells it, are we saying that there's not gonna be a smell? Yes, I'm just, no, because, because we can't guarantee that, and I'm just using this as an example. Somebody says, you don't, you don't wanna be here anymore.
I would say no, only because of the store that is in Warwick right now, across the street from West Warwick. If you drive by there, walk by there, it doesn't smell, I don't.
So, I'm, I'm just one of these, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to cover all the bases before we say yes. And something like this happens, and, and we've had a lot of issue. We've had a lot of questions regarding a business that just opened and wanted to play some music. You play, you have this happen, all of a sudden, there is a smell, near may not be. Near a restaurant, near a, near a place where kids go to visit. Near a laser animal馆, and I'm not saying just picking on this plant, this could be anywhere. I'm just trying to avoid any complications.
Once again, I'm gonna go right to the statute that says, a city or town may adopt ordinances and ban, excuse me, and bylaws. that impose reasonable safeguards on the operation of a cannabis establishment, provided that they are not unreasonable or impracticable and are not in conflict with this chapter. So if there's an issue regarding smell, noise, anything like that, anything that's going to affect the human senses that's brought to the attention of the council, and it's legitimate, you guys can act on it. If the statute allows you to do that.
Well, that's all or not.
No, but I mean, if your opinion is that it's going to smell, you're going to have to get somebody out there.
Well, I don't think it's enough. Well, I mean, I'm just saying, if it does, can we fix it?
Right. Yes, some of this, yes, it's not unreasonable. So I don't think the smell comes directly from the retailer themselves.
One, one point on, one point on smell.
Now, hold on a second. Go ahead, Mark.
I was just saying that I understand that the smell doesn't necessarily or even remotely come from the retailer themselves. I'm sure it's packaged and it's Brian, but there's no way that that is the issue. The issue, which would, which could be addressed by a potential ordinance, is the people walking out and lighting up a parking lot, which does happen at that location. You can prevent that by discussing. You can, you can prevent that with paper. We're not going to, I'm sure, and the chief would speak to this, we're not going to leave somebody stationed there to just watch for people that might light up.
Yeah, but I don't disagree with what you're saying. But I'm not, like, somebody can leave a lighter starting and, and go in a car and open a bottle, which is not legal. It's also the same, not legal to get in a car and light up and then drive home. It's just, it's very similar as far as that goes.
Yeah, I see going down the street now with smoke coming out of these ads.
But again, they can also, they're across the street, so.
But that's.
The old, um, the old ninety-nine. It's, they, they go across the street to West Warwick anyway. So I think that that's.
We're reaching off into something that's not what's in front of us. My concern that's in front of us is that we removed some of the guardrails that were in the original pre-amendment ordinance. And I don't see why we have guardrails in place for, say, a six-year-old in an elementary school, but not a three-year-old that's in a daycare. Because the state statute provides the authority through the state, not the town. So as far as the state is concerned. But what you've been told is that we can put these guardrails in place. I mean, what's the point of restriction?
Let me ask that question, the state supersede town.
Yes.
But again, it allows them, but they can go to the state file for, an appeal, and the state is going to give it to them.
But that's the first I'm going to hear. But listen, the reason we discussed this, that was not what we said. You have to be able to interpret what you want. So for example, if it's not unreasonable, unreasonable, excuse me, you're probably going to be able to do it. However, you can't protect people from everything. So for example, five feet away from the place, you can't smoke. Thirty-five feet away, maybe you can't smoke. But a mile away, I don't know. So as long as it's reasonable what you're looking for. For example, because they put in five hundred feet from a pre-existing public or private school versus the daycare issue. Right. If you guys want to say that we don't want this, for, you know, the state's going to have to approve it. You just can't really nearly do it, because that's not, that would supersede the state. Well, but as long, you guys can go to the Cannabis Control Commission and say, we would like to do this because of this. And see what they say. You're not permitted for doing that. Al?
Yeah, David, number one, as far as the use issue and the smell issue, we already have an ordinance that says where you cannot smoke and vape. The law is pretty clear that other than those limited areas, smoking cannabis, whatever, not only is it legal, but there was just a court case that held that a police officer no longer can use the smell of marijuana or cannabis as a reason to search the car, because marijuana and cannabis is legal and so commonly used, it's no longer an offense to give a police officer reason to smoke. So as far as the use of it, it's, we've got all the regulation we're allowed to have. So we can't handle that. We go to the, the only thing before you tonight is, are you going to allow retail sales in M, in B, or CI? That's, that's the only thing that's before you tonight. The use is a whole separate question. We took care of that some time ago. Cultivating, they do it. And what, basically what you're saying is we will allow it subject to the state rules and let the state take care of it.
Which is what we do for cultivators. Yes?
Well, I didn't hear.
How do we handle cultivators in this town? It's through the state.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the same thing.
Same thing.
I was not, I was not aware of the cultivators until I recently had a conversation with Chief Arone to find out how it go regulated. And he informed me that the state approves it. And the only function of his fire department is to go in and make sure that it's a, I'll call it a fire safe operation.
And that's not even, that's not even public. I mean, the fire department knows.
Right, right. So I know we're all discussing this, we're going bonkers. I just want to point out, now, correct me if I'm wrong. Actually, you can answer it for me. How many licenses is the Cannabis Commission going to hand out across the state or?
It's going to hand out, it's going to hand out two licenses to the four communities in which we are a zone. The other two licenses, one is going to this. There's four licenses being issued for the total four communities. One of those is marked for a social type operation. The second one is marked for a workers type organization. That leaves two licenses to be allowed within the four communities. And off the top of my head, I don't recall what, which four, what other three were with.
All right, so we're, we're sitting here, it might not even come to West Warwick. So I just want to point that out, man. Sitting here going back and forth. The only question this ordinance resolves is, do we want to allow that? In these zones.
In the zones, right. And, and I'm going to go with my, my issue.
That's it in a nutshell. Do you want to allow retail sales in a business or a CI zone?
But not within five hundred feet of a school if it's within those zones themselves, right?
Correct.
So my little issue is, I'm not looking to keep them out of town. I'm just looking for some certain protections for certain types of establishments, such as daycares. Or, you know, I'm not sure how close a residential zone or a, a person's house would be to a CI or a B. I'd like to see a five hundred foot buffer from any home, because.
Well, so, no, he's finished, he's finished having a bumper to see how it ran, right behind him.
Well, that would eliminate any.
I mean, but that's, it's a business park. That would put a plaza behind it, less than five hundred feet away, that are actually.
Right.
So like, when you go to, like, you sit below a car.
I'm not saying it's easy to. I just want to know. I'm just saying that.
No, it's impossible.
As, as, as a resident.
Impossible.
I don't want this five hundred feet, within five hundred feet of my home. So.
So can I, can I ask this question quick? And I'm going to make a figure of this in my word. Again, I haven't talked to anybody about this. Really, they says, you know what, we're moving out. There's an open spot. Can this, this store go into that place? Because it is a business.
Does it have a zoning certificate, a building regarding C, commercial?
If, if it does, then this should be allowed.
It can go there, right.
In the midst of all the houses that are.
You've got, you've got eight square miles in this town. And you have to subtract at least a mile from the river. Spring, five hundred feet or a thousand feet from a residential property is almost impossible.
It is impossible.
It is impossible.
Those, excuse me, those were the first things that I had in the ordinance that were requested that I take out of the ordinance. Distances from houses because.
When the General Assembly was going through this, people brought up these same issues. Okay, especially like in Central Falls, where things are very compact, West Warwick, where things are compact. All right, so it's already been hashed and going through. And this is what they came up with. So if you're going to try to reverse that and go back and say, listen, we don't want any of these things if it's next to a residential neighborhood. How many commercial places right now are next to residential neighborhoods? Especially in our, every single one of them. So you, you can't, you can't impose that. That would be impracticable, but also be unreasonable. So you wouldn't win on that. Well, the daycare issue is much more palatable because it's kind of the same as pre-k, but it's not in a public school that's been, you know, uh, is, the Department of Education has authority over it. But that might be something where somebody said, yeah, it's the same as a kindergarten, but we don't want it happening. So you're lucky on that.
It's, it's not, it's really not. Whether you like liquor stores or not, it's not really different than a liquor store. And the fact is, it is legal. So again, people are kind of across the streets and into work.
It is a little different. My, my concern is the smell.
I don't, I think the smell. The marks of the smell is somebody who's smoking.
If somebody doesn't follow the rule, right?
Correct.
And everybody followed the rule.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, so.
I think that's a realistic.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to say. And I'll, I'd be very honest with you, I'm not going to be hypocrite. I don't want it in my backyard. I don't. You know, I think it can lead to issues because some people don't always follow the rules. Some, some do, some don't. And I think, if you want to go, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Unless somebody.
No, I'm ready to go.
First, you have to make a motion to amend the presentation.
Six or six point one.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance.
Amend two thousand six by two thousand six point one.
That's right, you said it, Al. There you go.
I'll make a motion to do what I would have said.
Say it.
Move a second, all in favor to amend the motion.
All right. Okay, now we have a move.
Motion to, motion to, well, so I'll move. No, I don't think they need to.
What moves to approve the order?
Now, a warning.
No, no, I guess you're saying we need to? I think we just.
You just accepted the amended, now you have to move to.
Move the amended, move the amended ordinance.
Second, move a second. Now, on a further discussion, any public discussion on this ordinance?
Hi, I'm Amanda Flynn. And I'm just going to use this opportunity to say that I feel like as a citizen overall, the public safety is looked far past by this town council. Um, that, you know, the people that came up tonight talking about coolness room, like, there are people that are worried about kids getting hit by a car. Um, and it's been three, you know, three meetings now, and these people still can't get one side, you know? And then we're talking about. I understand, I understand, I understand. Okay, so on the marijuana, I never heard anything about a vote in this town. I think that's a big consensus that people are not hearing about votes in this town.
There's some of that.
I never heard.
I believe twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so maybe my, um, outlook on things had changed possibly. It's a possibility, but I don't feel safe in this town. I will say that. And, um, the fact that we don't, our police officers in this town don't have body one cameras is a problem. Okay.
This is on this ordinance a week ago.
Okay.
So.
All right, um, okay, you don't want to hear what I have to say, but thank you.
No, you can talk to the public.
It's not on topic.
But if it's on topic on this ordinance, it's not about police cameras, it's not about safety. It's about whether or not we want to allow marijuana retail sales in the town or.
I don't, because it's unsafe.
Okay, that's what you want to say. You want to say that.
I was trying to get to that, but thank you for cutting me off.
Any other public comments? I'll take a vote, a vote, okay?
I, I'm not, I'm not on this.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Looks like it's on me, you know? I'm going to go yes, I don't think it's going to come here. So it's just my opinion.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten, amending chapter eleven, motor vehicle in traffic, article two, operation, section forty-seven, motor vehicle restricted routes and appendixy of traffic ordinance of do not enter Campbell Street. Move the ordinance.
By the side, all on side.
This, this, I, this was requested by the residents of Campbell Street because of traffic. A number of discussions, well, myself and Councilman Dennison. Uh, one way did not work, because if they got in, they couldn't get out. The Cullis Act did not work, because you'd have to take some land. So the end result was that we would consider do not enter from East Greenwich Avenue onto Campbell Street. That would leave the residents' ability to drive in both directions. But it would prevent primarily trucks from entering from, uh, East Greenwich Avenue onto Campbell Street. The manager raised the issue with me about school buses and emergency. I spoke with Christopher Mann of the school department, who is, handles the bus routes. And he informed me that, yes, the buses come and go in both directions on Campbell Street. So in the ordinance, we made, we made the ordinance, no entry from Campbell Street excluding school buses and emergency vehicles. I think they'd be excluded in any event. But as a safety matter, the ordinance now says, no entrance from, uh, East Greenwich Avenue onto Campbell Street except for school buses and emergency vehicles. Uh, Mr. Mann was completely satisfied with that. And that's what I'm now presenting to you. And as I believe, and Mark can speak to this better than I can, I think this originated with the residents of Campbell Street.
Yeah, I'll take it from there. Um, you're correct, Al. Um, some of the folks are here tonight. They approached me probably two or three months ago with this concern. And according to what they've told me, the traffic on Campbell Street, it's not just the number of vehicles, but it's also the type of vehicles. And that being more of the, um, the heavy truck traffic using Campbell as a cut through. And it's always been a problem, but it seems to have been exacerbated by the detours and, and people using it as a detour to get around the Coeset project for a couple of years. Well, that lasted a couple of years, finished up early this year. Um, so they came to me, they were, they were really, really organized. And I have a packet going around that was given to me by one of the residents. Um, they, they got together, signed a petition, and they were just looking for some sort of relief. There was a lot of different things, as I mentioned, that were, were brought up as potential solutions. Um, much like anything else, it, it's a wish list and you don't always get your wish. But they're looking for some relief with the amount of traffic and the, the type of traffic that goes up and down their street, which, um, has been used as a cut through, like I said. So I, um, I just really acted as a conduit. I worked with Major Ketchum as, um, as he's a member of the Traffic Safety Committee, and asked him to take a look. And he did a couple of studies. He had the radar machine out there and, and the trailer and got some data. And it did show that there is, there is a significant amount of traffic going up and down that street. Um, so really, I just, I, I wanted to be that go-between, between the residents and the TSC. And I was open to anything and everything. And that's the way we left it. And this is what we've come up with, or what the, the TSC has come up with. And speaking to some of the residents, I think that this, this is a satisfactory move. Um, the, the one question that was posed to me earlier tonight was if somebody's coming down East Greenwich Ave and they live on Campbell Street, this means that they will have to go around as well to the London to come up their street. this means that they will have to go around as well to the London to come up their street. And I, I acknowledged that, and I said, I've heard from residents that they are more than willing to do that. So with that, I'll leave it to the others up here, and then eventually, you know, there's some representatives from, from Campbell Street here.
One, one last point about the notice. Again, on September thirtieth, Major Ketchum put a notice in all the mailbox on all of Campbell Street and a couple on East Greenwich Avenue, and the notice said, residents of Campbell Street, there is now a town council meeting on Tuesday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty five, starting at six P M. in the council chambers to discuss adding do not enter sign on East Greenwich Avenue exit of Campbell Street. Between not allowing cars to enter from East Greenwich Avenue and enforcing commercial vehicles cutting through, we can eliminate some of the traffic concerns. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please feel free to appear at the council meeting and voice your concerns during public comment. That was delivered on May thirtieth, on September thirtieth, by Major Ketchum.
Any other questions from the council? Public comment? If you have any comments or concerns, just come up, state your name and address for the record.
It's just on the topic of Campbell Street, like, there's people on the street. I've lived on Campbell Street for over thirty years, sensitive, not a cool city avenue. They use it as a detour, the traffic, the volume, the speeding is out of control. So I live right on the hill, so if they put a do not enter sign coming down, I think that would help us out a lot. So when Major Ketchum did the traffic study, he had the digital, we've done that a couple of times, and he had a traffic study, and over a two-week period, now Campbell Street, you're not from anywhere, it's a straight shot. It's one street, nothing off it, connects East Greenwich Avenue and New London Turnpike. So he did a traffic study for two weeks, fifty-nine hundred bus vehicles came through there. That's well over four hundred a day.
Most, most of them are coming towards these both ways.
Both ways. But how many, it's around twenty-four houses. Okay, so, and how many, how many cars are coming through between midnight and five in the morning? Not twenty. So that should say right there, and I did, my wife, we've got a petition going, there's twenty-four houses, anybody but two houses that I just couldn't make contact with wants something done, so it's pretty much your hands. Thanks a lot, thank you very much.
And Mike, they're comfortable with closing the East Greenwich Avenue side?
Yes, I mean, we would've loved a dead end, but that was a pipe dream.
Yes, it was.
But, I mean, I think we would be very, very happy with this.
Thank you, thank you. Wait, I can read this.
Do not enter.
You can also go to East Greenwich, you can't come, you can go onto East Greenwich, cannot come into East Greenwich. Okay, okay.
And the speeding is bad.
That's not necessary, I'm gonna help.
What I didn't tell you is about two months ago, somebody was flying down and he demolished a cop, totally cop, a hot cop. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is David Carroll, and I've lived on eighteen Campbell Street since nineteen eighty-one. And I'd like to see something done. I don't know if you're familiar, in law, economy court, they had people cutting through all the time, and they made it no right turn off Airport Road during certain times. So either speed bumps or something, just, yeah, I think he answered my question, my lawyer. I'm a resident there, if I was coming down East Greenwich Avenue, would I be able to enter? I'd have to go around too.
You'd have to go around.
Well, I, to me, it'd be worth it, though.
All right, thank you, thank you for your.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Just come on up, state your name, whoever's next. So the whole road wouldn't be one way. You just couldn't, you just couldn't enter that road, there's a two-way road.
Hi, good evening, my name is Kevin Richart, and this is my wife Marie. We live at seventy-one East Greenwich Avenue, which a portion of our property, for all practical purposes, is on Campbell Street. I can honestly say we have a front row seat to a lot of the problems that are being discussed here. Some of our issues and concerns are, it's already been mentioned, is the quantity of vehicles that travel through there. When we purchased the house in twenty eighteen, there was a sign on the pole in front of our house that said, no through traffic on that road. And, you know, we went ahead and purchased based on that, thinking that we weren't gonna have to stop them from traffic. I can honestly say, in the almost eight years we've been here, it's gotten exponentially worse. Going hand in hand with the quantity of vehicles is the speed. If any of you are familiar with how my driveway sits, you know, it's right on that corner. So the cars are flying down East Greenwich Avenue, and I know we're not here to talk about speed, but the speed is excessive. They come around that corner, and it's really a safety issue for us, I mean, if you go by my house, ninety-five percent of the time, my cars are backing because I feel I'm taking my life in my hands to back out of my driveway to get out. So.
So is the driveway on East Greenwich Avenue or?
You know, my address is East Greenwich Avenue, but if you're really standing in my driveway and looking, you're seeing the guardrail that's basically along Campbell Street, so I'm not far onto Campbell Street. The commercial vehicles have been an issue that's been getting progressively worse, I mean, we've had eighteen wheeler tractor trailer trucks up that road. I happened to be home one day, and I heard a large truck, and I just got out of the shower, and I threw clothes on, and I found a large truck on the center of my front lawn, halfway the distance between Campbell Street and my house, making the turn off of East Greenwich Avenue. It was an equipment that would fall, say, like a Vega rod excavator. And he, you know, when I approached him, he said to me, so if I had to make the turn, and my thing was, are you doing business on the street? He said, no, he said, well, you really didn't belong in East Greenwich Avenue, and if you found yourself on that road by mistake, if you went straight down to the light, you would've gotten out onto Coeset Avenue. But he found it justifiable to destroy my front lawn, which cost several thousand dollars to repair. So, you know, I had mentioned about the exit out of my driveway. The other thing that goes hand in hand with that is the lack of consideration and the aggressiveness of the drivers who feel that they're entitled to be using this road as a cut through, and I'm in their way when I'm trying to enter or exit my driveway. It becomes a safety concern, we have people giving us expletives, I mean, humping the lawn at us, I mean, being quite ignorant about it because they feel they're entitled to use that road as a highway versus my access to my own personal house. You know, we have reported to the police another one occasion, the damage on the property with the vehicles driving up on our lawn. I felt compelled that I had to put a camera in the front window, and it, you know, it would be valuable, I mean, I would turn over that furniture to you folks, the recorder I have, we've got sixty days of what goes on. I can honestly say I appreciate the signage that was put up, the no through trucking, but I can honestly attest that they're not paying attention to it. The usual violators are still coming through, you have an occasional truck possibly coming from center of New England, you know, they come off, I mean, food service trucks, tow trucks.
That's controlling.
Um, you know, I'm not here to really single out anybody, but I think you folks know, as I mentioned, who the usual offenders are. They're absolutely done with it, and then you get the newbies coming down. So, I mean, and it's happening from both ends, it's coming off of New London Avenue, and it's coming off of East Greenwich Avenue.
Yeah, that's majority is it come down, well, both sides, but coming down East Greenwich Avenue, taking that length, we're gonna be okay. But coming from New London, that is, that is a heading from the hand.
I do appreciate the signage that they put up, I mean, you have to put a sign at the, at the beginning, coming off of New London Avenue, there is a sign in front of our house, and there was a sign that was put at the beginning of East Greenwich Avenue, that Coeset Avenue. That sign was ready to destroy, somebody destroyed the sign, it's down by Coeset Avenue, so I mean, yeah.
Was there a reason they decided that direction was that more traffic coming from that specific way, or they just had to pick one side?
A little more residential, a little more.
I, I would just, it's also, again, comes in like this.
Exactly.
A high, a high degree. Yeah.
Can I say something to that?
Yes.
I'm like right at the crest of the hill coming down from East Greenwich Avenue, and that's where they absolutely got it.
Got you, okay, so they're gonna go fast, they're going down.
Right, I mean, we saw that both ways, but, I mean, there's a lot of traffic going both ways, but you gotta do something.
Right, yeah.
As soon as the cars that merge off of East Greenwich Avenue coming straight and then taking a mile right, as well as the cars making a turn, it's just excessive. To a point that it's really like, we feel like the safety hazard for us.
These are currently a no through trucking?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so technically, East Greenwich Avenue, to our knowledge, always had a no through trucking on there. And it was supposed to be no through traffic on Campbell Street for as long as we've been there. So, I mean, you know, it boils down to, I, it's probably been happening for years, it's probably gotten to a larger degree, and people feel like, cause I've been doing it, I've got the right to do it, but it's really, it was never designated to be a cut through, to my knowledge, so. Anything you can do to help with the situation would be a relief.
With the, with the. My general sense is that it's just become worse and worse since the Coeset project.
Yeah.
Where it's almost like it was a discovery by a lot of people.
Yeah, it's a well hidden secret that I call, you know, we nicknamed it the well hidden secret, I say very wrong.
So I assume, sorry, chief, I'm gonna put you on the spot again, if, if we pass this, we'll have to have some, you guys will have some police hanging around your house, I assume, because there'll have to be some enforcement, because if you don't enforce it, it's not gonna be any different.
Right, listen, if it was found doable, I think enforcement would start teaching people that, no, you're not gonna put on the do not enter road and get away with it, because there may be a policeman around the corner to monitor it. You know, we should be relieved, and what's being proposed, we would agree with, I mean, if the, it would affect our ability to have to go around for some reason, depending on where you're designated from, I mean, we're all for it, we just want relief for the situation, so, I mean, we know that there's gonna be a headache on it, and we're willing to do our, our part with this, whatever it would take.
And Mike, I'm gonna go back, you said you talked to everybody but two people on the street, because you just couldn't get to them?
Yeah, one was in the street, one didn't want any part of, I was thinking maybe we're gonna get a dead end, which I know, they didn't want any part of that, but one out of twenty-four, the other two, when I had to pass in the, what do you call it?
Petition.
Yeah.
Petition, that's right.
You know. I couldn't chat, no. I couldn't make contact with two people, but since talk to one of them, and they're all for it.
So everybody's okay with no, do not enter from East Greenwich Avenue, they're comfortable with that?
Everybody wants something done. If you read the comments, because I was just gotten so sorry that, Mike, to see what we can do, and Major Ketchum did say, you know, they did put up the no through trucking signs probably like three weeks ago, but if it's not enforced, nothing's changing, and I know they can't sit there all day, but he said they would try to enforce it, and, but the thing is, the sign where you put it, not him, but where you put it, it's so far in on Campbell Street.
Oh, yeah.
Once you turn that, you're not gonna back out.
So that's something that can be looked at.
But if it's a do not enter up there, we don't read that sign over there.
Okay.
So you said somebody has their hands up?
One with their hands. We don't want to be.
All right, Gary, one with a hand, you can just state your name and address for the record.
I'm East of DeLorenzo, ten Campbell Street, so I live at the bottom of the hill, most of my neighbors that have spoken are further up. Being at the bottom of the hill is treacherous because you try to back out, and they're coming down, they're getting to the bottom, and it's like you're on a sled, right?
Yeah.
So if there's a do not enter up there, that probably will, because the other way, you have to accelerate to get up the hill, but this way, you're really flying down. And also, the other day, I almost got hit head on coming out, I went up Campbell, and because there was a car speeding, I went to go up, you have to peek around that that guardrail, the brush and everything, to make sure no one's coming around that corner, and then no one's coming around the other corner, and there was a car flying, and he was coming to Campbell. And so while I'm trying to get out, he's flying in, and I jammed my brakes on, everything fell, and he went like this to me. So it's, you know, I appreciate everything, I had sent the email to you, Councilman Dennison, and I appreciate all of you taking it seriously, because it is a safety concern, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may, I wanna thank all of you, because you've come to tell us that, you know, you read it every day, we can hear it, we can read it, and have to try to make a decision, but your input is valued, I mean, it makes a big difference, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll reiterate that, that it means a lot on any topic to have folks come in and help guide us as to what they want. It, it's tremendously helpful, and you guys have been really, really organized with this, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a hand raised online. Just state your name and address for the record.
Derek Reeves, nineteen Peters Lane, shit, I almost said sixty-two Andrews F. I've said this multiple times in the past with these roads in this town, including the road I used to live on, I don't know why we don't start implementing some kind of speed bumps, like they do in a lot of these other towns and cities across the state now. You don't have to do a full speed bump across, but they've been doing, I've noticed in North Providence, East Providence, Pawtucket, even in Providence, they're putting these square speed bumps with like space between them. And that's slowing the traffic down, especially myself with trailers and whatnot, you've got to almost come to a complete stop before you go over this thing. But the spacing between them, I've, I've asked what this, what that's for, is mainly for like policing, rescues kind of can get their tires between them, and it also allows for the water to flow when it's raining heavily. But I think for some of these neighborhoods, we don't have enough police officers to cover all these, these areas where you've got speeding going on through neighborhoods and up and down these streets that, like you're talking about here with Campbell Street and whatever, we should really start thinking about other ways to slow down the traffic, and like I said, these other communities, you, I know, I guess slow rate down to almost a stop on them.
Thank you, Derek, I have to stop, you know, because it's off topic, as I know what you're bringing up, it's probably on topic a little bit, but it's not on the Campbell Street line, but.
Thank you.
And you also lied, because you weren't coming to the night's meeting.
You what?
He didn't, no.
You said you weren't coming to the night's meeting, but it's your anniversary, so.
I know, I had to, I had to, I had to get on here and just watch a little bit.
At the end, we're so mad.
Taking a break.
All right, bye. All right, just to explain, you have a, just come on.
I live on twenty-one Campbell Street, which is actually right in the center, so you're gonna hear from the bottom and the top. In the center, I have worked from home for about five years, and right in the front of the front of my house, and I have to say, as our council person said, since the work on Coeset Road was done, everyone, many, many, many more people have discovered this street and realize it's a, it's a very convenient cut through. And one danger that wasn't talked about was, whatever kind of traffic we have, which is great, is a great deal of pedestrian traffic. There are many people that walk, I don't think they necessarily live on our street, but they walk through our street to get onto the Turnpike and to go up East Greenwich Avenue, and that's what I think we want to encourage people to do, and it has become quite dangerous. The other day, after the signs were posted, I was driving down Campbell Street, and I was going probably the speed limit, twenty-five miles an hour, and not one but two trucks passed me. That is, I don't know how familiar you are, but it's not a long street at all. So for two trucks to pass me from the top of the hill to twenty-one, which is the middle of the street, it shows you how it has gotten out of control, and I appreciate everything that everyone's doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanna explain, the ordinance is first reading, so this would be on our next council agenda for a second reading, and then once that passes, it's twenty days afterward, so I just don't want everybody to think that we pass it and there's gonna be a sign up tomorrow. This is gonna probably be somewhere in the November timeline, so just please work with us, give us that time, because those that are out there, again, I said go for a second reading, second notification, and then twenty days after, after passing. Any other comments? Gary Young, I'll take a roll call vote, okay?
Just looking at the petition, I have relatives that have signed a petition that are on the street, so to avoid.
You think that's an issue?
No.
No. There's no financial issues, so, I mean, you're.
I'm just going to err on the side of caution, having been through the Ethics Commission before.
Sure.
To accuse myself of this vote.
Okay. Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Can I go yes? Four oh with one, your choose one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Business licenses.
All the business licenses I zero one through fourteen.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion on the business license? I shouldn't accuse myself, sorry, better accuse.
Do we need another second?
Second, I'll say. Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Gary Young, all in favor?
I oppose.
I just have it, if you're on here for a business license, you've all got to approve.
Appointments and reservations, request from James Atmarch Jr. for commitment to the Westmore Art Development. Move the appointment.
Moving second, Jim is, he's always very informative, I don't. Moving second, uh, Jim is, he's always very informed about it. We have constant conversations about situations. I know through actions, we had a conversation about the post office this week. I know we kind of fell a little bit behind, but we did much based on it. I did have no, it was only on the agenda. So things like that, he's always been a very, he works for town council pretty well. Great, great addition. Any other comments? Gary Young, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Eyes have it.
New business, August twenty twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-six, monthly financial report.
Pardon me, councilors. Current year tax collections total twenty-one million, two hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, which is thirty point seven percent of the budget for current year taxes. To date, one quarter has been collected. The next quarter is due October fifteenth. Prior year tax collections total a debit balance of two thousand and eight dollars and ninety-two cents. The debit balance is a result of the reversals for refunds, NSF checks and payment transfers. And the line was adjusted for the sixty day rule that was booked back to fiscal year twenty-five. The adjustment represents collections from July and August. And overall, the revenues are at twenty-three point five six percent, which is six point eight nine percent higher than anticipated. This is mainly attributed to strong tax collections, higher than expected finance revenues, and the receipt of the distressed community's payment in full for the year. Expenditures are trending under budget at twelve point one nine percent. This is four point four eight percent lower than what is expected two months into the fiscal year. Nearly all the operating departments are running on target or slightly below budget. The Civic Center has current operating expenditures of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, four forty-nine and eighteen cents and operating revenues of seventy-one thousand, four hundred and four dollars and twelve cents. Majority of summer camp revenue is collected prior to camp starting on June sixteenth, but the bulk of the expenditures for summer camp appear after seven one. So it'll even out plus ice hockey starting soon. The bank balance as of September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five is seven million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. We are, we earned an additional nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents of interest on the three million invested in Citizens Bank for the month of August, bringing the balance to three million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, forty-three dollars and fourteen cents. Any questions?
Any questions for Kristen?
Right now, we're looking good. Under expending, over collecting, life is good. And the weather is upcoming next week. And I'm ready.
Thank you, Kristen.
Okay.
Discussion action. Request from the fire department, a purchase of turnout gear, cleaning and inspection.
Move to end.
Sorry.
Chief? Hey, thank you very much. Um, so um, after we had a, a little too late recently, we had a company come out and um, why we inspected and were able to repair any um, problems with the, the turnout gear. Um, so what we'd like to do is to have them come out and do everyone's gear. Um, and that's what is before you. Are there any questions?
Any questions you would see?
Yeah.
No, it's any questions? Eric Young, all in favor?
I agree.
Oppose? Eyes have it. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
All right, item three was already considered earlier in the meeting. So item for consideration of property damage claim from Red Island Energy.
Second. Moving second.
We had a heart set in wreck, an employee that was doing some service on the side of a lot and struck a rock that damaged a Red Island Energy truck. So they, they filed a claim with us. So we're just looking for, looking to cover that expense.
To go right back. Three hundred. Any other comment? Eric Young, all in favor?
I agree.
Oppose? Eyes have it. Sure, that's about the third complaint I've heard about rocks falling into windshield from uh, we lack is can we get sure about before there's something written in the asphalt electric?
No.
All right, we can talk about it later.
He says, "Pass the job." I know, yes, you are.
Resolution transferring fiscal year twenty twenty-five surplus funds for capital projects to be used in fiscal year twenty twenty-six and forward from general fund one hundred to special revenue fund eight fifty.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, Mark. So as Kristen mentioned, the auditors are coming next week. Um, and anticipation, we anticipate a surplus of approximately a million dollars from fiscal year twenty-five. I know we had a, a challenge um, in preparation of FY twenty-six where we eliminated a significant amount of capital. Um, so we're proposing or requesting your consideration in moving five hundred thousand dollars from that anticipated surplus into a special capital account to cover some projects. Um, specifically, and we'll come before you, should you approve this, when we have specific projects in mind, but we'd like to continue, we've been doing fairly well on paving roads over the last few years. We haven't set aside any money for that for next construction season, although I'm in the process of applying for the state's municipal road and bridge program, which still give us thirty-three percent back up to a certain amount. So I'd like to have some seed money um, available um, once I submit those plans. And then we have a lot of, well, I don't say a lot, but we have a handful of grants, um, either waiting an award, um, or we're about to submit applications for um, that will require some co shares. So having that, those funds available, um, so we could utilize any federal or state money that we're awarded by paying our somewhere between ten and sometimes up to twenty-five percent co shares, which obviously we come before you um, with specifics at the appropriate time.
Any questions for Mark? Eric Young, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Eyes have it.
Request from Nat, Narvikis Electric, Verizon, New England, and Purple Installation on East Greenwich Avenue.
Move approval request. It's a resolution.
Moving second, any discussion? Then just move fifty feet down the road. On the looks of mobile development. No comments? Eric Young, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Eyes have it.
School building committee update and bond referendum on October eighth, twenty twenty-five.
So although it feels like this is coming to a conclusion, um, with a bond referendum vote tomorrow, um, you know, the work is still in reality in its infancy stage. I, I think the school building committee and the people that have worked with it have put together a very responsible and sensible proposal, a group of proposals um, in the best interests of our town and our school community um, at large. Um, so tomorrow there is an all-day referendum held at the Field House from seven AM to eight PM, requesting voter consideration or approval of up to seventy-one million dollars in, in bond to address the numerous projects that we've, we've spoken about, essentially touching every school um, with some type of improvement with a, a primary focus on overcrowding, addressing the movement of fifth grade out, out of our middle school and back to neighborhood elementary schools and in preparation of mandatory pre-K. So it's a very energized uh, proposal. Um, obviously it seeks um, a, a significant amount of funding, of which we get sixty-eight point three percent reimbursement back from the state of that. So you know, the, the cost to our taxpayers, while um, it is a significant amount of money, um, the end result is something that would be a tremendous benefit to our communities.
So I, I know over the past week, especially since it's been, seems like the vote no, vote yes groups are out there. Um, but the vote no groups, um, and a lot of people seem to be misinformed. And you know, people out there telling me they're going to raise taxes for thirty years and four percent free each year. Um, out there saying it's twenty years and four percent. Um, that yes, there is interest. There's, there's always interest on any loan, any bond. We bond road bonds, we bond wind turbines, we bond many things through the years. There's always going to be interest. If anybody can get me an interest free loan, let me know. Um, but I've got to say, and I'm going to be open and honest here as a council person. From the very beginning, when I first heard this, I was one of those probably, I don't know if we want to do this, can we afford this? And I'm sitting on that building committee, sitting on all the information that everybody has gotten over the past month. I'm sitting here as a taxpayer, skip me as a council person. I'm sitting here as a taxpayer saying, this isn't a wish list. This is stuff that needs to be done. And it's probably going to be done within the next seven to ten years, if not sooner, especially with mandatory pre-K. You're looking at twenty twenty-eight, which is two and a half years old. If we're paying fifty million out of our pocket in three years for just a pre-K to put that addition on, that's fifty million plus the full interest on the fifty million. Right now, we're talking thirty-two million with interest, which would cover that entire project now, plus many other projects. So you've got to look at the big picture. Because if we, this council or any other, now it's been said out there, I don't, I know on August twelfth, we all sat there and said, we as a council will never, this council specifically, I can't speak for the future councils or anything, would never go to legislation to, to get more than four percent tax increase. We made that loud and clear, five, five plus, all said at the same time, no. Okay, so that rumor out there is untrue. We did never said that. We made it clear we would not do that. Secondly, if the taxpayer votes no, and they can vote however they want, they've got to look at the big picture all along, saying that might be four percent over the next ten years because now we're going to be paying full price for all these projects. Oregon definitely needs an elevator. Maisy Quinn is going to need some sort, one of our schools, whether Maisy Quinn or whatever, is going to need some sort of addition for pre-K. Never mind bringing the fifth grade back to elementary. But look at the big picture. I've seen a lot of people on there just saying, vote no. Don't have no rhyme or reason why to vote no. Just vote no. Enough is enough. I get it. Taxes suck and they really do. Nobody wants to pay more. But if this bond goes down and we move forward with these projects over the next ten years, I can guarantee it's going to cost us three times as much.
So, so question on this, I've seen some of the votes that I've looked at a lot from this. So different people saying using different numbers. And whether it's, you know, you have to pay this back over a certain amount of time or four years, four percent, thirty years, and then all this don't get the interest and all this, and all the numbers are different. The, the question that I have, and just to clarify for everybody out there who's going to vote either way, if the bond does not go through, everything that's on that list is going to have to be fixed because of safety.
Somewhere along.
Some, somewhere down the road, we're going to have to pony up the money to say, all right, we have to fix this. And we're going to have to pay for this no matter what.
This is this real thing, you know, real, I used to hear it up here all the time, kicking the can down the road. I will say this, if we continue kicking the can down the road, it's going to cost us three hundred dollars.
It doesn't cost us much, it has to be done.
This is a can you don't want to kick down the road. And, and not only we get all that way reimbursed, the pricing and all that stuff could wait longer too.
Yeah.
You, you're asking what you need to do. I mean, one school has its original windows, twenty-plus years old. They, they need the windows.
I mean, everything, Green Bush is over forty years old.
Is he real?
I know that.
He's forty, he's forty-eight.
I think the school building committee and the people that provided input really narrowed this down to key things at each facility that really need to get done. Uh, the wish list was much higher. And it took the people initially some time to to settle on the fact that we, we just can't do that at all. It would not be responsible. Um, and again, we, we worked with the numbers to try to find uh, a, a bonding, and I know it's referred to as bond capacity, um, that we would feel comfortable paying um, and spreading out over the appropriate time, while leaving us with some emergency wiggle room to handle things as they come up. So we're not, we're not at capacity, we're not asking the overcapacity. We're at a number that we think we can reasonably handle with our responsibilities and commitments over the next few years. Um, and to be able to tackle this while the state is offering us sixty-eight point three percent reimbursement. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Any questions for Mark on that? Thank you.
Upcoming appointments, reuse for review, appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate number for a three-year term. So reuse for a review, appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Tax assessment for a review, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. School building committee, architectural, engineering, construction experience needed. Recreation committee, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. The Chox at River Authority, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. The Chox at River Authority, appointment or reappointment for a three-year term. Arctic Village redevelopment agency, that was filmed tonight. Upcoming town council meetings and events. Tomorrow is the school bond referendum at one hundred Factory Street, the Civic Center from seven AM to eight PM. October twenty-first is the next regular town council meeting. And November fourth is the town health meeting after that. Cover four.
Any other comment?
I do have one on mine now.
One, first one.
Hey guys, I'll be short and sweet and this is, this is for good things. So one of my hats I wear in this town, other than anything else, is um, part of the um, West Warwick chapter of the Rhode Island Two Hundred and Fiftyth Commission. And the um, the reason of the two fifty commission is to commemorate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the events throughout history that have brought us to the freedom and independence that we have today. And twenty twenty-six will be that year. Uh, the Rhode Island has asked us different municipalities to have different events to show up all this, this excitement of the two fifty. Uh, first big event is a fundraising event to throw out some cost of some other stuff we were doing in June. And it's November fourteenth. It will be open to all residents of West Fork that would like to come. Um, it is called Colonials and Cocktails. And it, it's a night um, to mix and mingle with some great actors that will be in British colonial attire and um, as our uh, patriots of the day. We'll also have the ladies of the green uh, doing a fashion show throughout that night. So there'll be a little bit of fun revolutionary entertainment that night. It is a cash bar, only twenty dollars. There will be orders from Melonzy's Past as well. So um, this is just, we just are advertising for it now. Again, November fourteenth, twenty dollars for a fun night to do something different, to celebrate the two hundred and fiftyth. And I invite everybody to check it out. It will be at the West Fork Country Club. At six PM, tickets can be bought by me um, at the West Fork Civic Center Field House office from nine to three. And if that's not possible, they can always call my office there.
What's the date again?
November fourteenth. It's a Friday night. And something fun, something different. But yeah, I'll be running.
It's dressed up from when you grew up. Thank you, Nicole.
Okay.
Any other comment? I'll page you this group. One on one. Just state your name and address for the record?
I guess that's me, David.
Uh, yes, just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tom Oates, Sixth Colonial Way. Um, I've had a difficult time with this new Zoom and been unable to make the last couple of meetings with scheduling. However, I wanted to make a point here. A couple of meetings back, uh, I had voiced an opinion on the parking when the first, first came up on Coolest Road. Pardon me. And the issue we have with parking all over the town, uh, people parking up on sidewalks underneath, big no parking signs is a big, big problem. Uh, and, and everywhere else, but words don't come as smoothly as they once did. And I kept using the word enforcement. And that's really not where I was going. And I don't, uh, don't mean to minimize what our police department does as far as enforcement. They're busy guys and girls. They keep us well protected. The word that I was really looking for that night, and it didn't come, is compliance. Now I'm putting the blame on the citizens that don't care about their neighbors. They don't care about the signs. They don't care about the laws. That's the big problem. People just don't. That's the big problem. People just don't seem to care. Uh, so any offense that any of my friends in the police department had taken, I do apologize for that.
Thank you, Tom.
Now, I, I have another question sent to me. Uh, let me pass this on. I forgot what it was. Oh, oh, the, the uh, uh, applications or applicants for the solicitor's position. Uh, is there any particular reason why they're not being discussed in open forum uh on the floor and have to be discussed in executive session?
We haven't gotten to that. We haven't gotten that far yet. So we did put an RFP or an RFQ, whatever you want to call it, out. Um, we have a list, the council has a list of applicants who put their names or their firms forward. And we haven't discussed which direction we want to go yet.
Okay, thank you. I, I understood. I thought I had read that it was on uh public comment. I mean, excuse me, on executive session for that.
It is.
Okay, so is it eventually going to be discussed uh in open forum for the taxpayers?
Absolutely. When it comes time, we as a council have to have some discussions on who we want to interview or do go forward and go from there.
Thank you. One last thing, David, you'll be at the polls tomorrow sometime, I would imagine.
I heard you voted, but I'll probably swing by a couple of times.
If you do get, have an opportunity to swing by, look me up. I'll be there all day. I have a couple of quick questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you much. Have a good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Gary Dunn? Did Sarah think she had something? Yeah. Oh, I thought she said she had something. What she's going to do is have a discussion. Second. Move the second, all in favor?
I agree.
Oppose? Eyes have it. Moving to executive sessions.